Good morning, welcome to the Planning Commission meeting for April 8, 2010. I'd like to invite you all to join with me and the only thing today we'll probably agree on unanimously, and that is our love for our country, please join me in saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Madam Secretary, would you do the roll call, please?
Sure. Mr. Denio?
Here.
Mr. Severson, absent. Mr. Gray?
Here.
Mr. Moss?
Here.
Mr. Crabbe, absent. Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Brenton?
Here. So it appears we have a quorum. Paul, do you have anything to tell us?
I sure do. Paul Thompson here with the Planning Department. At Board Items, Board Actions, March 2nd hearing, the Board denied the appeal on the Saint Joseph Morello Church and upheld the Planning Commission's recommendation to approve that project, so that's approved. And I have heard whether or not we've received litigation on that project, I'm not assuming that that will happen. The second one, March 16th, Board Hearing, considered the Bunch Creek rezone and directed staff to present a modified project to the Planning Commission, the Weimar Applegate, MAC, and the Ag Commission, and then return to the Board with further TPZ information, research, and modified project, as well as the accompanying SEQA document. And then at the April 6th hearing, Board Hearing, the Board approved the Marijuana Dispensary Zoning Text Amendment to disallow dispensaries, co-ops, collectives, as a land use business in Placer County by a four-to-one vote. The Board also directed the staff to look at ordinance to regulate dispensaries and involve stakeholders in a process, also pending the outcome of the November ballot initiative regarding legalization of marijuana for recreational use, so still going to be looking into that in the future. Upcoming Board meetings, the Livingston Concrete Use Permit was appealed, and the staff is requesting a 90-day continuance of that item to August 24th to allow for additional environmental analysis to take place. The applicant and the opponent have both agreed to this continuance. And then the Caldwell rezone request, as well as the Gondola North rezone request, will be heard at the Board's May 17th hearing in Tahoe. As far as upcoming Planning Commission meetings, on the April 22nd meeting, there will be an appeal of the zoning administrator's approval of a variance to the signed regulations for quarry ponds, and there will be a conditional use permit extension of time for the Auburn Alzheimer's Care Facility, and a subdivision modification from the Coyote Ridge subdivision to allow for a gated community. And then a modification of a use permit for miners' ridge apartments, which was previously the Ridgeview-Villa's Silverbend project, so that was originally approved as a townhome project. They're now coming back to modify the use permit to allow for apartments. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions for Paul?
See, I forgot the name of it, but there was a zoning request in Alpine Meadows area?
That was the Caldwell.
That was Caldwell?
Yeah.
So that hasn't been dealt with by the Board yet?
Not yet.
Okay.
It was continued, and then it'll be dealt with on May 17th, I believe.
Okay.
Anything else? Paul, I wanted to discuss just briefly with you the idea of scheduling our meetings. I mentioned this to you just briefly before the meeting commenced today. It costs the county somewhere around $1,000 just to pull us together to meet, and not too long ago, there was two items on it. Quarry ponds was one, and the MAC item was the other, the care and feeding of MACs. And the quarry ponds got canceled, and I asked Kathy to ask you if we couldn't go ahead and cancel the meeting.
Right.
Because it seemed like a waste of money to pull us all together to hear something that was purely discretionary, had no time element to it. Today is another one of those days where it could be considered somewhat discretionary. We have the chicken matter, and we have the MAC item. I think that you and I need to coordinate just a little bit closer on these things, and if there are discretionary matters that we can put off, it would be more economic to get us to sit together for a longer period of time and tackle these things. I don't care how much is on the plate when I come in to sit down to do it, but I'd like it to be more than two discretionary items, because it pretty well chews up our day.
Yeah, okay.
If it's a time matter, you know, where somebody has an appeal, or there's some time element to it, or they're anxious to have it heard, fine, we'll do what's necessary to be done. But if we have the discretion, I'd like to look at our schedule with respect to combining those to a bigger gulp. Does that make sense?
Sure, sure. If that's okay with the Commission, to have bigger agendas, potentially go into the afternoon, we'd be happy to do that.
Well, back in the heydays, remember when everybody had money, including the state and the county, we would work all day long, sometimes nights, and I don't mind doing that, but, you know, it's a matter of economics, I guess, so.
Agreed.
I'd ask you to bear that in mind.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And now we come to that portion where we allow people to address the Commission on matters that are not on today's agenda, and I know there are some of you out there that would like to do so. You're welcome to come forward, tell us your name, and then say what you have to say.
Good morning, my name is Jess Tarz. I'm an ex-retired director of the Fiddler Greens Homeowner Association, and I read Mr. Kavolt's ad, full-page ad, so I thought I'd come up here and give you a few more facts. When they built the homes, there was, when Mr. Cockley bought his property, there was no access to Canal Street. The access he had was to Highway 49. The Association attempted to buy the property that he has for access from PG&E, and were told it was not for sale, and then they sold it to Mr. Conkey. Mr. Conkey evidently has made a best, bad investment. We all in our lifetime make bad investments, but hopefully the Planning Commission is not in the bailout business, and will bail him out by sacrificing our safety. In the last of the various projects that he has had approved, I'm sure he's been before you, he conveniently forgot that there's a memorandum of understanding that he has to improve, whoever builds something over there has to improve Canal Street. So it had to go back to the drawing board, and they had to make the modifications to include the memorandum of understanding that I got the general counsel of the County of Placer to dig through the files and find. And lastly, my son, who's an engineer with the state, tells me that Canal Street is not up to code to allow 18-wheelers. As a matter of fact, it's not up to any type of code. I noticed in the paper a year back or so, when the winery wanted a road, wanted to bring people in, that you were requiring all kind of conditions, and they finally got those modified so that, so they could afford to put in the road. And my son is sure that you don't have the required substructure of rock and sand and so forth on Canal Street, especially where it's 22 feet wide, to run these 18-wheelers. Now, I know they say that, that there will be no big trucks on there, but we know better, and if a big truck gets on there, there's no turnaround. They'll have to go through the neighborhood, come back out, and go in the front way. So what I'm asking you is that when you consider it, that you know that our developers did the best they could to keep trucks and keep us isolated from the parcel that Mr. Conkey is trying to develop. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Paula?
Good morning. My name is Paula Selig, and my husband, Arnie, and I, actually, Arnie wanted to be here today, but he had a joke for you, Jerry, but he's, this is not one of his better days, and he couldn't make it, so. But we'd like to emphasize the negative impact that a secondary access on Canal Street would have on our quiet neighborhood, as well as the health and safety issues that are being addressed by our neighbors. We do not think it unreasonable that Mr. Conkey be required by county officials to relocate his secondary access to some other location, given the negative impact that the additional vehicular traffic will have on the area, including Oak Ridge, Hyde Park, and the Woodside Village. And we just hope you, when you get the EIR, that you will also consider the health and safety and welfare of the people who already live there. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Paula.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Larry Needle, I live off Luther Road and Canal Street, and I'm representing several, several other homeowners who can't be here this morning, either because they're working, or they physically can't get to this public hearing. I'm here to speak on two of my main concerns involving the Bohemia Retail Project and the paid advertisement by Mr. Kavolt. I purchased my property in 1981, and was fully aware of the railroad tracks to the north and the Bohemia lumber mill to the west. I've been fully aware that the Bohemia lumber mill property has been zoned for commercial use for many years. According to Mr. Kavolt, the subdivisions surrounding the Bohemia property were built out by 1984, and Mr. Conkey purchased the property in 1987. Therefore, Mr. Conkey knew he was purchasing commercial property, abutting longstanding built-out subdivisions on the north and east boundaries with limited vehicle access. So my first concern, the additional traffic. The only entrance to my subdivision will serve as the secondary access for this huge retail center. Traffic access to 155,000 square foot retail building with 750 parking spaces and 18 fueling stations, and only two access points would cause an enormous increase in traffic for this area, and Mr. Conkey's town hall meeting presented two facts. Fifteen percent of the increased traffic predicted for the retail center would be expected at Canal Street, and internal trips generated from adjacent neighborhoods on Canal Street were calculated to be 500 trips per day. So my second concern involves Canal Street access to the retail shopping center. Mr. Kavolt's table, 8.7 of the Bohemia EIR, shows that 904 new vehicle trips on Canal Street will be created to and from a proposed discount club, but those 904 trips include immediate neighbors' trips and trips from neighborhoods up Luther Road. Mr. Kavolt did not mention table 8.8 for a discount superstore, which shows 1,100 new vehicle trips on Canal Street. Both tables, 8.7 and 8.8, in the draft EIR defines these new vehicle trips as excluding pass-by trips and internal trips within the proposed project area. So whoever the tenant is, 1,400 to 1,600 daily vehicles on Canal Street alone will be a traffic disaster for Canal Street, Luther Road, and surrounding subdivisions. In closing, I take personal responsibility to maintain and develop my property within the guidelines of my homeowners association, CCNRs. I'm only asking that Mr. Conkey maintain and develop his property within the guidelines of the Auburn Bowman Community Plan, as well as within his own project objectives, stated as to comply with the Auburn Bowman Community Plan and to contribute to an overall sense of community in the area. The Auburn Bowman Community Plan does state, quote, "encourages land uses that accommodate commercial services, but at the same time, site constraints, design guidelines, and other land use considerations may limit the development of very large commercial boxes or similar types of development." Thank you.
Thank you. Before you come, come on up, I have a question for you, Scott. We seem to be holding a mini referendum here on the Bohemia Project. Now, we had a hearing where we took in comments on the draft EIR. The final, to the best of my knowledge, hasn't yet been released, and while I respect the ability or the privilege of these folks to come and address the Commission on matters, the comments won't become part of the official record, will it?
No, no, these are simply public comments in a public forum, they're not part of the record of the proceeding on that particular project.
So if they want their comments to be considered, for example, Larry, you were mentioning table this and table that, to be honest with you, you know, unless I have that in front of me and I've kind of just freshly read it, I don't know what those tables are, so it's kind of, to some extent, lost on me. I hope that you will submit those when that hearing comes, or you'll come back and talk at that time.
I think they're going to submit it as a hardship.
Oh, okay, okay, you know, so go ahead, but I wanted to make sure you understood what the status of your comments was. Thank you, Scott.
Okay. Good morning. My name is Carl Coleman, C-O-L-E-M-A-N. I live at 2050 Canal Street, and I'm here also to talk about the Bohemia Project. I just want to stress that I am one of about 1,000 residents and three homeowner associations. I want to stress that I am not personally against the project, but I am adamantly against secondary access onto Canal Street. This is my fourth meeting on this. Within the last few months, I've attended the Auburn, North Auburn MAC, just on Tuesday, I was at the supervisors' meeting, I've been to some information meetings, and I'm here to just stress the same message over and over again. And my question for you today, I don't, I would love to get an answer to this, because this is a question I've always asked, and I'm still trying to get an answer for, is what is the Planning Commission's position as far as secondary access onto Canal Street? I am very confused about this question. We have been told by the developer and their representatives that this secondary access has been demanded by all of the following, including Caltrans, the Planning Commission, the Board of Supervisors, the county as a vague entity, the fire department, the retailer who wants to be in this project, although we have no idea who that proposed retailer is, and the developer wants it. The residents in this area have attempted to find out from all those different entities if, in fact, this is an absolute requirement to have the secondary access onto our residential street. From everything that we have garnered, there is no, there is no requirement to have a secondary access. We've checked with Caltrans, we've checked with, with the fire department, we've, the developer now in his full-page ad has already said that if the county does not require that secondary access, that he would not require that secondary access in his ad. So it's down to you guys, are you requiring the secondary access or not? Because then we can pour out some of our wrath and our frustration on the people that are demanding this access, rather than to waste our time running around trying to figure out who it is that is actually requiring this. The thing is, I want to point out, that when Walmart was proposed to go in here several years ago, the, at that time, there was only an emergency access proposed onto Canal Street. So I don't even quite know why, we're probably dealing with a, with a Walmart-type store now, why all of a sudden this is an absolute requirement to have a secondary access now when it never was before. My final conclusion on this is, I do a lot of traveling, I've been on the East Coast quite a bit, in the New England states, they have these box stores there, they're very concerned about signage and just how their communities look, and what they do back there is they have one way in and one way out of these box stores, and they typically, what they do is they build about a 30-foot-high berm around the entire project, so that they can't even be seen by the residents or the community. But to me, that's a great, if they can do it back there, if they can have one way in and one way out, I don't see why we can't have it here. So I hope today that somebody would please tell me if you guys are the ones that are absolutely demanding the secondary access, because nobody else seems to be doing it, and yet I think all you're going to hear this morning is how everybody is against this, including North Auburn MAC, who recommended not to have secondary access, just emergency access only. Thank you very much.
Before you leave, have you talked to the folks of the Planning Department yet to ask them that question directly? Because I can tell you the answer to your question, the Commission hasn't taken a stand on it at all, we haven't even considered the matter. But have you talked to the Planning Department folks who are in charge of this?
I personally have not been in to talk to them myself, I don't know about the rest of the people in our homeowner association.
One of them?
I've talked to the developer, I've talked to other agencies, the fire department, different people, but I'm hoping, is the Planning Department here?
Represented by Paul Thompson.
Can they answer that question this morning, right now?
I'm sorry, we cannot answer that question right now, but we are, and the reason is, is we're still going through the review process, the environmental review process, that's still in the process, we're still looking at the project itself, so we have not come to a conclusion as to what our recommendation will be to the Planning Commission when it becomes, comes in front of them. I will still say that we're, we're very close to getting the final EIR out, we're in the process of getting ready to present this item at the Planning Commission. It will be probably within the next month or so that it'll be coming here, and very shortly, you'll, you will know what our recommendation is to the Planning Commission, and then they will, they will decide whether or not to allow the, the canal access.
Could you, I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
But again, we're, we're still gathering information about the project and doing the analysis, so we have not, we don't have the recommendation at this point. And it's important to us that we get all that information from the public through the environmental review process, through our own analysis of the use permit, and then make an informed decision to the Planning Commission, so.
Could you at least answer the question, I mean, you know the laws and the rules, is there a requirement in the codes that would require a secondary access on a project that would be similar to this?
You know, I, I can't tell you the requirements, we'll, we'll have to go back and look at that, but we will provide you with that information at the public hearing in the future.
Good morning, my name is Lee Lively, I live on Tracy Lane, here in Placer County. I must admit that I'm, I'm surprised that our comments today are not at least becoming part of the administrative record. Nevertheless, I appreciate the opportunity to speak with the people in this room. We know that you, as we, want only the best for our community. We have united the people in our community, the four affected directly homeowner associations, and we are unanimously opposed to the Bohemia Project. The, we are promoting active participation by our homeowners to begin to show the flag, so to speak, and certainly we are preparing for the legal battle if, when this project is approved. The, I'm sure you know, some of you, that the EIR, the draft EIR that was submitted is incomplete and erroneous, and I am referring to everything from the laughable mitigation of signalization of Luther and Canal, to the incomplete social, what do they call it? The social economic analysis, completely inadequate, and the absolute missing and very important economic development, economic, what's the term? The lack of the community impact study, the SEQA requirement. We hope that you gentlemen and ladies will correct these deficiencies that are in the EIR, that were in the EIR, and before we see the final EIR, those deficiencies have been removed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lively. How many more folks want to speak on this issue? I know one, two, three, well, come on up, let's try to keep the comments to a minute or so, and.
Okay, my name's Joe Farrell, I live on Canal Street, and I worked 40 years with Caltrans, and the last eight years as a consultant to Caltrans. I'm going to address the Luther Road, Canal Street. First of all, the, the turning pocket there to make a left turn on a canal is 40-foot, that's enough for two vehicles or one semi. Now, if we increase traffic, we might have to increase that turning pocket. And to do that, you would have to back it up, and you'd be into the wise canal structure, which you would have to widen. So you do, you not have the storage in that area or a turning pocket, especially if you increase traffic. It's working now, but not with additional traffic. To get back to what Tori was saying, gentleman who was up here first, about the structural section of Canal Street, it is two inches of AC over six inches of AB. That is not desirable for heavy traffic of any kind. And also, looking at Luther Road, the approach, I'm going from east to west, coming off that vertical curve, you're coming onto a 9.6% grade into Luther Road, you have about 280 feet of sight distance, and that's, that's stretching it. But, but with the configuration of the two grades coming in, the steep grade and 180-foot vertical curve, as you queue up traffic at Canal Street, your stopping sight distance gets shortened considerably. You get about three or four cars in there, and you just about have no stopping sight distance coming over that vertical. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very short.
Bless you.
I do agree with the Canal Street.
Do you have a name?
Oh, I'm sorry, my name's Lois Fielder, I live at 1572 Cottonwood Circle, that's in the Woodside Village Mobile Home Park. In the EIR, it's, and I know we're not to the final yet, but what's in there right now is over 7,000 new vehicle traffic on 49 per day. And when I first read that, I thought, well, that's going to be included in the ones that are there, but there, I read it, reread it, it's new traffic. You guys all drive that road, you have to to get in here. I want you to really think about putting 7,000 more cars a day on that road before you make a decision on this. I mean, I, I just can't imagine what it's going to be like. I mean, there's enough accidents on there now, putting 7,000 more vehicles on that road is just going to be a travesty as far as I'm concerned, so, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Last one.
Hi, my name is Jim Lynetta, and I live on Aaron Drive, and I'll talk about Bohemia. I'm opposed to this project, not just the access, but the entire project. First of all, I'd like to say that, that no one is saying that Mr. Conkey doesn't have the right to develop his property, as Mr. Kavolt said in his ad, that's, of course he has the right, it's his property. What we are saying is that Mr. Conkey, like every other property owner, is responsible for developing an appropriate and compatible project for that location, and that he needs to consider the impact of the project, that the project will have on the immediate area. Now, I can't build whatever I want on my property, there's dozens and dozens of restrictions and zoning codes, there's codes on height limits, size limits, setbacks, secondary dwellings, care homes, daycare homes, vehicle limit, limits, and it just goes on and on and on, there's all kinds of codes. You can't just build whatever you want in a neighborhood. And the reason for these codes is to preserve the quality of life that a single-family residential neighborhood provides. Now, to build a pro- Now, to build a project of this size directly across the street from a residential neighborhood would ruin the very quality of life that all of these codes are in place to preserve. It doesn't make sense. Now, I'm not saying that any commercial project's inappropriate for this site. This particular big-box store project is what's inappropriate for this location. And the reason it's inappropriate is the size and scale of it. The fact that it's a big-box store is the problem. The Auburn Bowman Community Plan states under the Commercial Section Policy B-18 that, quote, "Height and scale of new development shall be compatible with that of surrounding development." Now, this project is clearly not compatible with this neighborhood. It is way out of proportion, not even close. Now, if it wasn't a big-box store, if it was something scaled down, a more compatible-sized project, it wouldn't attract so much traffic and everything that goes along with it, everything that everybody's concerned about. There would be no need for access from Canal Street, there would be no need for a traffic light on Luther, there wouldn't be as much noise or pollution, there wouldn't be an unsightly huge building on Canal Street. And that's the problem with a project, the size of it. You don't put something this large across the street from a neighborhood, it's that simple. This is just common sense here. Now, Mr. Kevold's ad in the, in the Auburn Journal states that Home Depot, Target, and Staples are good examples of successful projects in Auburn, and I agree with that. But you'll notice that Home Depot and Target, the two larger projects, they're nowhere near a neighborhood. Staples is, and the difference is the size. Now, I did some research on the Plaster County website to compare these three projects, Target, Home Depot, and Staples. Target, the Target site is 10 acres. The Home Depot site is 11 acres, two large projects not near any neighborhood. And the Staples site, which is near a neighborhood, is only four acres, less than half the size of the other two. Now, the Bohemia site is 18.6 acres. It's larger than Target, Home Depot. 18.6 acres is five times the size of the Staples Shopping Center. Now, the building alone for the Bohemia, the 155,000-square-foot store, the building by itself is three and a half acres. The building itself is three and a half acres, the same size as Staples Shopping Center, the whole shopping center. And that doesn't include the parking lot and the gas station. And this, this is a perfect example of what's, what is and what isn't appropriate to be next to a neighborhood. Staples Shopping Center, four acres, that's an appropriate thing. I would have no problem with that, and I think most of the neighbors would agree. The Bohemia project, 18 acres, is not compatible. It's not, it's not even close. Now, to put a building this size directly across the street from houses in a park and directly behind the houses on Dire Court is, is irresponsible and unacceptable. This, this building is going to be 100 feet from the houses on Dire Court and 97 feet from Canal Street. This three-and-a-half-acre building, that's the problem. This thing is huge, and I just want to stress that. I don't know if people realize how big this building is. And they're putting an eight-foot fence 10 feet off of Canal Street to hide this building. And the EIR says there'll, there'll be extensive landscaping to screen the building. Now, you can't put too much extensive landscaping in a 10-foot strip between the street and an eight-foot fence. You're not going to hide this building. This thing is going to be huge, and it's right on Canal Street. So the question isn't whether, you know, we need another big-box store in Auburn, or whether Mr. Conkey has the right to develop his property, or whether access on Canal Street be allowed, or whether a traffic light on Luther is necessary. The question is, is this project appropriate for this location, and is it compat, is it compatible with the surrounding neighborhood? And the answer is clearly no. And that's why this project should not be allowed to be built. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else want to speak? You didn't raise your hand. You're going to give us all copies of the Auburn Journal article that appeared? Why don't you just give it to the county clerk? You know, another alternative is to hold on to these and submit them when the final EIR and the decision matter comes before the board. You might have, oh, you have copies for them too, okay. After this gentleman, how many more want to speak? Okay, we're going to cut it off after him.
Good morning, gentlemen. Other members here this morning. My name is Jim Elsie, that's E-L-S-I-E. I live on Tracy Lane off of Canal Street. I've lived there for 31 years. I've attended many meetings throughout the years. At no time did I see, quote, "mob rules" at any of the meetings. The only place I've ever heard about that, where there's been grumbling and there's been articles in the paper about it, is that if you live somewhere else and you go to Starbucks, the three guys next to you might have a gun in the holster. We don't have that here. We don't have that kind of a problem. I am not personally against Mr. Conkey building his project. And as Mr. Coleman said, I am adamantly against putting access other than emergency access on Canal Street. That street is so low on the grid, I don't think they probably even have it in the books as far as the Plaster County traffic, the amount of traffic that's being generated today on that property. If you look, as the gentleman spoke about from Caltrans, or retired from Caltrans, you've got a hump there right in front of Woodside Village. And where I live at on Tracy Lane, I can hear the sirens when the ambulance calls, because probably 90% of the people living in Woodside are elderly people, and they get response calls in there two, three times a week. If you're trying to do something, do it off of Highway 49. Highway 49, to my knowledge, is a B-rated highway. If they were planning on building this complex in there, fine. If they weren't sure they could get it, then why did the state and everybody else go along and have a right and a left-hand turn and a huber to go back in to where this proposed project is going to be? It was also mentioned in the article here about, let's get the facts straight. Well, the Steve gentleman, he, he put down that, about this much, if you take the copies afterwards and read them. He said that all along, that that property was zone commercial. That's an erroneous statement. It was not zone commercial until June 1994. And I know a bunch of homeowners that bought houses in there, and if you want, I can ask them to pull their deeds up, and they will read on the deed when the actual change occurred. Through the years, the property has gone for approval through the planning commission and everyone else involved in it, and it's changed numerous times. There's a requirement that I live within 300 feet of where the proposed project's located at. They have to send me a letter, the county people do. Okay? In 94, June of 94, that's when they changed from light industrial to commercial. Anything prior to that was a yo-yo going back and forth. Another thing, Mr. Conkey tried to buy four feet west of our sidewalk on Canal Street, which still is owned by Fiddler Green Homeowners Association. We turned the man down on that. Afterwards, he went to PG&E and paid for an easement next to the PG&E yard on Canal Mr. Conkey changed the zoning in his proposed project area from commercial to residential because he wanted to build a group of houses in there. Okay? You can't build houses on a commercial property. And I think, as I recall correctly, at that time, that property, the houses were going to be from around $375,000 to $425,000 apiece. Well, the market took a tank, so therefore, he backed out the door and went back to commercial When, when Target and Home Depot were built, and that wasn't that long ago, they didn't back up to a residential area. The only one place that this Steve gentleman could find to have anything that he might call to his favor is the Staples Store downtown. That store's been there for 41 years, through different types of owners, different types of businesses. That's the only one. Kmart out here, it doesn't back up to a residential area. The new Safeway store over across on Bell, it doesn't back up to a residential area. Home Depot, it doesn't back up to a residential area. In essence, what I'm saying is, is that, as I mentioned a few minutes ago, I'm not against Mr. Conkey making a living, but I'm adamantly against him putting in a open access on Canal Street. One other thing that's in the, the clippings there, the articles there, about, let's get the facts straight, I plan next week to go down and see other stores in the areas that he mentioned, Birdcage Walk, the Galleria, so on and so forth. I don't get down that way very often. There's not much that I need to buy that I can't buy here in our town. Couple other things that I object to. One is the fuel station. The fuel station, according to the information that I have available to me, has to be 100 feet from the Fiddler Green and the Wise Canal. 100 feet basically is, if you live in a neighborhood, you're talking about three lot sizes across the front of each one of these houses, which will come out close to 100 feet. If you build a fuel station where it's located now and it develops a leak, or they have a blowout, none of you people, all of us put together, what money we have, IRs, whatever, will be able to pay for all the damage that will be done on that big canal. They also mentioned in here, big rigs. And it says in the article that I read it, it said, Mr. Conkey says, well, no, there'll be no big rigs going on Canal Street. Well, that's great. He also says that the big rigs that go in to make deliveries, that they won't run their engines more than five minutes. Well, it isn't what Conkey says, it's a state law. You can't run your vehicles, big tractor-trailer rigs, for more than five minutes. And I called Cal, the CHP, and got verification on that. He said, there's only two exceptions. One, if they're coming from, say, Reno on 80, and they run into a snowstorm, they're allowed to pull over and run their engines to keep the driver warm or whatever. The other one is, if you have a big accident, they are allowed to run their engines and get off to the side of the road so the emergency vehicles can get there. One other thing, what they're proposing, if I'm understanding this part correctly, is the hours of operation, irregardless what type of business goes in there. They're stating from 6:00 AM to 12:00 AM. Now, are we talking here from 6:00 o'clock in the morning until 11:59 or 12:00 o'clock during the day? Or are we talking from 18 hours, from 6:00 in the morning till 12:00 midnight? There's a hell of a difference between those two timeframes. I can understand that whatever project gets built in there, they may want to open up at 7:00 in the morning and close at 10:00 at night. The only other business I know of in our immediate area that is open for 24 hours or less is, I think the new name is CVS or CEXV, Long's Drugstore up at L. They were touting the fact that they were open for 24 hours. I know people that work at the different Long's Stores, and they tell me it's a joke. The only thing they did from 10:00 in the evening until 6:00 or 7:00 or 8:00, when they opened up the next morning, was stock shelves. There was no business. And in closing, I would like to say that Walmart has been famous throughout, as far as I know, with regards to RV parking overnight. One, two, I'd like to see that whatever, whoever comes up with the final EIR or whatever, that's one thing. The other one is no car or truck sales. And the other stores, the other Walmart stores, I've seen that this does occur quite frequently. And I thank you for your time, have a good day.
Thank you, Mr. Elsie. Okay, with that, we'll cut off the public comment and bring it back to the non-existent staff. Look at them run in, huh? Why don't we, while they regroup, let's take a couple of minutes and regroup. Paul, the one of the questions I have is, what's my authority as the chairman to reorder? What I'd like to do is go ahead with the chicken thing and put the MAC last, since that's just an information item, and there's more people here for chickens than MACs.
You know what, here's what I would do. I would go ahead and open up the, the first item, and then continue it to a time-
And you're here to present the MAC, right? Yeah, well, would that be okay with you?
Yeah, that's fine. I will note, though, that there are a number of people that I see out here that are here for the MAC item.
Well, now that the majority, okay, we've got three. How many are here for chickens?
So if you say that again, then get everybody's attention to it more.
Okay, well, we'll just take them in order then. Let's take a three or four-minute break, and then we'll proceed with the MAC schedule.
There you go. Can you go?
Okay, let's, let's resume. The next item is the municipal advisory councils, actually, it says municipal advisory councils. Actually, it says municipal advisory councils. Presentation by Crystal. Go ahead.
Uh-oh.
Nothing's working today.
Because I was clicking the wrong arrow. My fault. It looks like we have a little spelling error. I'm sorry about that. So I'm Crystal Jacobson with the Placer County Planning Department, and I'm here today to talk about some board direction that was given to staff. We were directed by the Board of Supervisors at its January twenty-sixth hearing to prepare this report, which provides an overview of the municipal advisory council's responsibilities that relates to the planning process, and then to bring forward any feedback that the Planning Commission might have regarding that process to the Board of Supervisors. So specifically, the purpose is really to kind of summarize the MAC's participation in the current planning and the county-initiated planning process, really specifically zoning text amendments. And then any recommendations that you might have, we will bring forward to the board. So just to give you some background real quick, the board established municipal advisory councils, beginning with the Sheridan MAC, and this is back in nineteen seventy-eight. A total of thirteen MACs have been established since then. They include the North Tahoe Regional Advisory Council, Squaw Valley, Weimar Applegate Colfax, otherwise known as WAC MAC, Meadow Vista, Forest Hill Forum, North Auburn, Newcastle Ofer, Henrin, Horseshoe Bar, Rural Lincoln, Granite Bay, West Clasor, and of course, the Sheridan. Oops, one more thing here before I go on. So really, the, just to also give you an idea or some background on how the board came to this direction, at the January twenty-sixth hearing, the staff, planning staff, was providing a report to the board on our general fund work program. And as part of that report, we were talking about some zoning text amendments that we're currently working on. And so that generated a discussion about whether or not those projects should be going to MACs. And the board really expressed a desire for some of those projects to go to the MAC, and so they directed us to kind of explore this option. So with respect to the MAC's responsibility on the current planning process, the policy on this is really based on the zoning ordinance, section seventeen sixty-one forty. This is contained in attachment B in your report. It is also included in what's called the MAC handbook, page nine, and this is attachment A in your report. And the MAC handbook is this little document, which the MAC uses as a guideline really for their overall responsibility with county projects and the process. And then also, Planning Department uses this really as, kind of sets the stage on how we do our job with the MACs. So what it says really is that projects that go before the Planning Commission are presented to the MACs for their consideration. And specifically, it states applications. And historically, we have, this, what we've done is, it's typical that applications means land use entitlement requests. So if any project that would come in, a current planning project, goes before the appropriate MAC within the boundaries for which that project is associated with. I will note that projects that go before the zoning administrator and personal review chairman are not presented to the MACs for their consideration. So the MAC handbook and the ordinance state that it's just projects that go before the commission. And then for those projects that do go before the commission and that are undergoing CEQA review, they're presented to the MACs as, first typically as an informational item in the early stages of the CEQA process, and then again, as what would be considered an action item toward the end of that process and before it goes to the Planning Commission hearing. So then the MAC would then typically offer a recommendation on the project to you. The same projects that would otherwise result in the preparation of an EIR can be presented to MACs on multiple occasions. And really, the reason for that is to keep the MACs informed of the CEQA process as it's moving forward, because that can be kind of a long process. And then also to notify them of the circulation of draft EIRs on the process or on the project, and then to give them an opportunity to comment. We don't comment necessarily at the MAC meeting, but we go there to let them know that the draft is out, and then they can formalize comments and submit them for the Planning Commission's consideration. And then with respect to their responsibility over county-initiated ZTA's, this policy, the process in which we go through this, the ZTA process, is contained in the MAC handbook, page nine, again, that's attachment A in your report. And basically, what it says is that county-initiated zoning text amendments are not required to be presented before the MACs. And so typically, we have not done that. We do do that sometimes when we are directed by your commission or by the Board of Supervisors to bring them forward for whatever reason. I will note, too, that even though we don't necessarily present them before the MACs, notification is provided to the MACs on these projects simply because all projects that go to a Planning Commission hearing, we're required to notify the MACs. So they get a legal notice sent out of the hearing, but we don't necessarily take the projects to the MACs in the evenings for their consideration. And then again, just at the bottom, at the request of the Planning Commission or the Board of Supervisors, we have presented these projects to the MACs. So in summary, again, with respect to the current planning process, it is staff's opinion that that process does work effectively, and we are not recommending any modification to that process. With respect to the county-initiated projects, otherwise known as zoning text amendments, we are currently, I will note, working on a number of these, many of which have been presented to all the MACs. And in fact, a really good example of that is the item that you're going to be hearing next, otherwise known as the Fowl and Poultry Ordinance. That has gone to every MAC in the county. I will note, too, that county-initiated zoning text amendments typically do result in county-wide policy change. And so because of that, if we are doing a zoning text amendment that results in policy change, they typically would, you would want to take them to every MAC if, in fact, that's the direction we go. It is staff's opinion that MAC input on these projects is useful in that it provides the community input on land use policy that might otherwise not be provided. However, we do want to point out that if we do bring the zoning text amendments to all the MACs, it can impact both, one, the timing of that project review, so it would be a little longer because it takes a while for staff to get to all of those meetings. And then it also can increase the cost of the county's review in the sense that it results in additional cost to the county's general fund. These meetings are held at night. So there's some, sometimes some overtime that is associated with that. I will point out that, again, the board discussed a potential modification of the MAC notification process for county-initiated zoning text amendments, where notification would be provided to the MACs prior to the hearing, which would give the MAC the opportunity to have the project presented to them. So with that, and in response to that direction, staff recommends that the Planning Commission provide the following recommendation to the Board of Supervisors if you should desire to do so. Direct staff to prepare an amendment to the county zoning ordinance, section seventeen sixty-one forty, that's A six, in its title notification to MACs, which would include a sixty-day notification to the MACs for all county-initiated projects. The amended notification language shall provide the MACs the opportunity to have such projects presented to them for their consideration and shall include a fifteen-day timeframe for which the MACs are required to respond to the notification if they choose to do so. We have had some discussion with some of the board aides on who sort of coordinate those MAC meetings with staff. And the fifteen-day notification, it's my understanding that most of them are okay with that. And the reason for that really is that we do a lot in email these days, and so it could be a real quick notification that staff gives to the board aide to see whether or not the MACs want it on their agenda, and then we can know, you know, pretty much right away whether or not we're going to take that item before them. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Crystal? Nikki?
Just wanted, when you notify the MACs, do you personally have somebody go through the meeting every time, or is it simply an email?
Well, we're proposing.
Not proposing, now.
Oh, now, it would be a, something in the mail, so snail mail, essentially. And it's a, it's a legal notice notifying that those projects are going before the commission. So they actually have mailboxes. And I understand, too, that I think the MACs are, and I think there's some folks here that can probably speak to this better today. I think that they're trying to kind of gauge whether or not they want to move away from that process of the mailboxes. I was at one MAC meeting recently where they had indicated some trouble with their post office box and getting the mail. So I think there may be some instances where perhaps they don't get the notification in time for the hearing and, you know, those types of things, because, just given that, you know, the overall mail process.
So if I understand it correctly, now, when you notify them about anything that either you're required to or chose to, it's done through the mail?
Yeah.
Your proposed idea that it would cost more if you do it, why would it cost more if we do it more often, just because a couple of stamps?
There are two, there are two processes, really. There's the current planning process, in which case we do have ongoing email notification with the MACs, and we go there and present the project and we notify them, okay? So they're going to get a notice in the mail of the Planning Commission hearing, and they're also going to get notification via email or a phone call from the Planning Department saying, could you please put this project on your agenda? We want to come to the meeting, okay? The zoning text amendments are county-initiated projects, they're not land use entitlement projects. And those typically don't go to the MACs. But what we are required to do is to notify them of the public hearings. So before it goes to your commission, we send out a legal notice, just like we do to, you know, any landowners that would have any interest or people within, you know, certain distance of a property, and they would get a legal notice. So I'm not, we're not suggesting that that, there would be any increased costs with the notification. The increased cost would really be with respect to staff time that would be spent at these meetings. If you have a zoning text amendment, go to all of the MACs or just go forward, period. And the requirement is for them to be presented before the MACs, then you have thirteen MACs. So essentially, that's.
Is it required right now that they do present them personally?
No, we don't. Unless we're, unless specifically we're asked to do so. And so currently, right now, we have about three or four of them that are making their way through the system right now that my staff's been working on. And those, we've had specific instances where either your commission or the board has asked us to move those forward through the MAC process. And they've resulted in each one of them, thirteen MACs. We try to, you know, tag-team it, so to speak, where we'll take two of them to each MAC at the same time. That way, we don't have, you know, twenty-six different MACs meetings that we're going to. But, so my point here is just that it could potentially increase the overall cost to the county in that there's additional staff time associated with each one of these meetings.
Unless we decide to only notify them via email, in which case there wouldn't be, or if we ask them if they want more information, they come down during county time for that.
Yeah, the cost is really, if the MACs want to hear the project, if they want it presented at their meeting, that is, you know, so that we could have their verbal input.
Eric, they're making that request?
Right.
Okay. So we can say, no, come down during county time. Do it. We want to save money.
They, yes.
Okay. Any other comments?
Questions?
Have there been instances where an item has gone through, and then you've heard back from the MACs, how come we didn't hear about that first?
Yes, indeed. Uh-huh. In fact, the item that came before you, the medical marijuana zoning text amendment to define and disallow dispensaries, collectives, and cooperatives, that one came to your MAC, or, excuse me, your commission. And then we got word that some of the MACs were interested in that. And so what we did, actually, is we took it to most of the MACs. There were some that were not interested, but we gave them all the opportunity to hear that. And then we provided their input before the Board of Supervisors when they made their decision on Tuesday. So we have had that happen.
No, we took action on it and went to the board, and they heard it last Tuesday.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Crystal, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anybody in the public would like to make a comment? If so, come on up. Give us your name and tell us what you have to say.
Good morning. My name is Sherry Wicks. I'm a twenty, thirty-two-year Forest Hill resident. I'm also a member of Forest Hill Residents for Responsible Growth, FROG. And the municipal advisory councils, MACs, are tasked with the duty of gathering input from their communities on matters of concern which relate to their, their specific areas. And as well, they make recommendations to the appropriate county departments or officials. Our organization is very concerned and strongly endorses that MACs will continue to have an opportunity, as well as time, to thoroughly discuss and make recommendations on anything that affects their specific areas, including zoning text amendments. In order for the MACs to make their necessary recommendations to the county and for the public to give their input on any projects, including zoning text amendments, there needs to be enough time given for each MAC on every item considered. We ask and urge that the Planning Commission, the Board of Supervisors, send any proposed zoning text amendments regarding timelines back to the MACs for their inputs. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherry. Anybody else?
Hello, my name's Roy West, also from Forest Hill. I happen to be the chair of the Forest Hill Forum at the, currently. I'd like to, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but back in ninety-five, there was a resolution by the Board of Supervisors that kind of took all the other resolutions in the, in creating the Forest Hill Forum, and, you know, would add it from, make it from six members to seven, different things. And then in ninety-five, they kind of made a resolution that put everything all into one resolution rather than having all these other ones that have to be referenced, when it, you know, dealt with why it was established, territorial jurisdiction compositions, et cetera. Item seven on this is duties of the council, and it says, "The council may advise the board," council meaning the MAC, "the council may advise the Board of Supervisors on matters of concern which relate to the area served by the Forest Hill Forum Advisory Council, including but not limited to land use, public health, safety, public works, law enforcement, and recreation. In addition, the council shall advise the Board of Supervisors on matters specifically referred to it by the Board of Supervisors for review and recommendation." I like the idea of having the ZTA's being required to go to the MACs. I think that would fine-tune this statement in here where it says matters of concern to the communities. And I haven't seen all the other resolutions for all the other MACs, but I presume they're basically of the same pattern. So I would recommend that, and as I understand it, I always get confused because you have so much information you present when you come to these. Your recommendation is to not change it and not require ZTA's go to the MACs, correct?
My recommendation is right up here, actually, on the screen, and it's actually to give the MACs the opportunity, if they'd like for it to be presented. So we would consult with the MACs to see whether or not they wanted to hear that item, and if they did, we would come before the MACs.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. Actually, I like, that's acceptable to me, too, because some ZTA's are going to be pretty minor things that are not really worth county staff time coming up to present. And the, when you say county-initiated projects, in other words, I think you said, in other words, ZTA's, is that what that means? County-initiated project means zoning text amendments?
There are times when zoning text amendments come forward from a project applicant. It's very, very rare. Typically, zoning text amendments are initiated by the county. It may be because of some public interest, but it's very rare that non-county-initiated ZTA's come forward. We are specifically talking about county-initiated zoning text amendments.
Okay. There are going to be times, though, when someone wants to rezone or amend the code somehow. I'm wondering if it could be reworded to just say zoning text amendments rather than county-initiated projects, if that would be acceptable to your department?
If a zoning text amendment was being proposed by a project applicant, we would automatically take that project to the MACs.
Okay. Well, again, like I said, there's always so much information, I don't always get all of it. But I think that's all I have. Thanks.
Okay, Roy, thank you. Anybody else want to speak on this? Well, just come up when you get a chance.
I'm Muriel Davis from Penrin, and I would hope that the Planning Commission would support the Planning Department's recommendation. I think bringing these ZTA's to the MAC has been very helpful, especially on this marijuana issue that came up. And I'm not sure, we only meet every other month, so I think that sixty-day notice will still work for the Penrin MAC. And I would hope that the MAC members would, if they decide not to have the presentation at the MAC, that they would at least announce it to the people so that they would know about it and can research it on their own, okay? Thank you.
Okay. Good luck with that part.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Muriel. Yes, sir?
Good morning. My name is Dwayne Frank. I live in Forest Hill, California, and thank you for the opportunity to come and talk to you about this matter. I have fairly long and I have fairly long involvement with municipal advisory councils. Terry Cook, Supervisor Terry Cook, appointed me as an alternate when the North Auburn MAC was initiated some years ago, and Joe Chevro was the Chair of that time. And I served on the MAC until I moved up to Forest Hill, and I'm now on the Forest Hill Forum. So I get to see it from a couple of different perspectives. I would believe that you gentlemen, your colleagues who are not here today, would find benefit in hearing from the community members about zoning text amendments or county-initiated or privately-initiated changes. The people who in the neighborhood or the county will have to live a long time with that change. And it would be, I would believe, helpful for you to have that aspect. I think it would be helpful for the county supervisors to know what the people in the community think about a proposed change that comes from their government. It would also help make our government more transparent, and that's a good goal. The changes here that are recommended by the Planning Department, I think, are excellent. I do have a slight concern on the 15-day turnaround time. I'm not sure whether that is workable for all the MACs in the area. I, I have no knowledge, but that is a short time. And I also support the notion of not causing delay in terms of something going forward. So it would seem to me that you should be able to pick something on the calendar of how things work, notify early enough so that the comment, opportunity is there, opportunity to people to make their views known, but still not cause any delay in the project. In terms of cost, I think on balance, the community, when they come to a forum meeting, we have excellent attendance at forum meetings, whereas in the North Auburn MAC, we had not very good attendance. It was hard to get people, unless you had something like you had earlier today in your public comment, then you have a lot of attendance.
Yeah.
But the point that I'm trying to get at is that you have five to seven volunteers who are there committing their time and effort, as well as the county providing for the expertise coming in. So the cost to the county on the dollars and cents going out is on balance with the cost of the community volunteering their effort to make it happen. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
My name is Richard Tallyafaro. I'm a member of the WAC MAC, and my comments are limited to my own opinion, not that necessarily reflective of the WAC MAC. I'd like to just kind of back up what the gentleman just said and add to it, that at the last month's WAC MAC meeting, it was the most well-attended this year. People were all, 15 people in attendance that were not part of the Safety Committee or, you know, otherwise not affiliated with, were there to voice their concern. And I'm not trying to plow up old ground, but I think that what was addressed, your concern, Mr. Moss, about, has it ever happened that the, this body has passed things that people would have liked to have commented on? That's really important. And if it costs 42 cents for a stamp to send out something, that 42 cents might prevent a lot of resentment from Placer County residents that they didn't get a chance to voice their concerns. I think this is a good idea. I would concur with the last speaker that a 15-day timeframe might not be enough. If there's one MAC in this county that was not able to give input on one issue, that might be something you might want to consider preventing by giving more of a notice. And as far as the associated costs, you know, 42 cents, it's a small amount of money to prevent a lot of potential upset citizens, you know? I'd also like to point out that on page 38 of the MAC handbook, there was a proposal that was denied. It was a request from former Supervisor Bloomfield to look into having the municipal advisory councils assume some of the Planning Commission duties. That was denied at that time. Of course, in 1995, 1994, December 13th, there was a lot more commerce than there is now. And being a contractor, barely holding on to my home right now, I've been more involved, you know, with local issues and state and federal issues because it's critical at this point. I think I'm not alone in that. I know a lot of other contractors and people in business that, you know, would like to explore ways why, how we in the community can, you know, instead of asking our government to help us, can help each other. And through bodies like this, we might be able to come up with some solutions to the major crisis that's taking place right now economically. So I just ask that you might want to review, re-review this attachment on page 38. And if we in the communities can assist in planning, that might save some money. And it also might bring the communities together rather than not getting notified and creating some problems within certain communities. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Pat Mulberg, and I'm the aide to Jennifer Montgomery, Supervisor for District Five. I just wanted to clarify the process that we've now initiated in a couple of the MACs where the snail mail doesn't work because of timing. And so we have, in fact, voted on the MACs. It's not me. It's the MACs have voted to close their boxes, in fact, to save money. And we do everything by email, and it's so instantaneous, it's absolutely marvelous. And from the Planning Department, we get notices as soon as they're prepared. Comes to me, I send it out to the MAC members. They give me feedback as to whether they want to hear something or if it's important. And so it works very, very well. And I think the 15-day turnaround, if this is a process that others can initiate as well, where you just, you know, save money on postage and, and copying and do everything by email, the 15-day timeframe is certainly adequate. So I just wanted to clarify that part of our process.
Thank you, Pat. Yes, sir.
Hi, Lee Bastian with Sheridan MAC. A couple of issues, because I know the Planning Department sends out notices by mail, and unfortunately, our box doesn't get checked except once a month before the meetings. So, so a lot of times with the planning notices we get are past due already. The other thing is, I would recommend approval to this and zoning text because your board approved the marijuana, and then after the marijuana, then they came to the MAC meetings and advised us so that your decision was already made with, you know, our inputs, even though we had no input at our board meeting at it after the Planning Department brought it to us.
Thank you, Mr. Bastian. Anybody else want to speak? Well, I got you and I got one behind you, so go ahead.
This is Mary Freeborn. As a member of the public, I did send a couple of letters to the MACs, and it took them a long time to get to their mailbox. So perhaps if we're going to go to email, it could be up on the website so that we know to either send it to a particular person on the MAC or to the supervisor's field representative or someone. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Tamara West, and my husband is the Chairman of the Forest Hill Forum, and he's been on it for quite a few years. And until he became the Chairman, the mail went to the P.O. box, but it was not distributed to everyone on the forum, and it was not put on a table so the public, when they came to a forum meeting, could read it. Once he became Chairman, I started scanning it and sending it to everyone. And yes, you would save money if you closed them down, but you have to make sure that someone is on top of the emails, which Pat and Jennifer have been really good at. The other thing, you mentioned economics. The county staff who come to a forum meeting and present this can either, they get time, comp time, they did when I worked there, or they could take off early in the afternoon and then come to the meetings. I think that could be worked out, and I hope you support this.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Saying none, we'll cut off the public input. Gentlemen, any comments?
I have a question.
Ricky?
Could you redefine county-initiated project? And tell me what is a county-initiated project?
A county-initiated project would be some sort of text amendment change to the ordinance that the Planning Department would be proposing. So it's not bringing, it's not a project that has been brought forward by, say, a project applicant, like somebody in the community, a developer, for example. It is actually something that the Planning Department is proposing. So it's, it's, it's within our agency.
So it's supposed to be like the chicken-
Correct.
Issue.
Yeah, oh, I'm, specifically, yeah, the, the fowl and poultry.
And bohemia wouldn't be.
The marijuana one-
And bohemia would not be.
That would, that would be county-initiated.
Bohemia would be.
No, no, no. Bohemia is a, a current planning project initiated by a project applicant.
But bohemia's already noticed to the MAC under other provisions of the, of the requirement because it's a project.
Correct.
Yeah. We're talking about beyond these individual projects.
County-initiated is, again, initiated by the county. An example of a county-initiated ZTA would be the medical marijuana ZTA that came before you a month or so ago.
And an example of a non-county-initiated project?
Um, sometimes-
Would that be bohemia originally?
That would be, well, that would be, that's not a zoning text amendment, but that is a non-county-initiated project, yes.
Okay.
Mr. C., I might try for a little clarification, too. There's, from time to time, we've seen parking structures in Tahoe that the county initiates. And so when we're talking about county-initiated projects, there are some projects that aren't zoning text amendments that the county would actually initiate, correctly?
Correct. That's, these are different. This is more policy-related. So anytime we're putting forth an ordinance or policy, that, those are the types of projects we're talking about here. We're not talking about physical, on-the-ground projects like parking garages or some sort of county facility. That's not what this is about.
Yeah. So that's what I understand. This is zoning text amendments primarily.
Correct.
Are all county-initiated projects slash programs ZTA's?
Um, no, not necessarily. There sometimes are general plan amendments that the county might initiate. However, those always go to the MACs. So like, for example, a community plan update would, you know, it's ongoing, it typically requires some sort of SEQA review. So this is specific to zoning text amendments. And really, the reason for it is that, the reason they sort of stand out on their own is a lot of times they don't require SEQA review. So it's a smaller-scale project from, you know, from a workload perspective. And so it's sort of, it, it seems to have been separated a little in the, in sort of the overall policy on how the, the staff deals with these. But no, general plan amendments, community plan, you know, updates, those types of things always go to the MACs.
Okay. I'm a big believer in the MACs. They serve a very important function, as Mr. West said, in the scheme of things that we do in the county. And they are probably as close as we come these days to the Old Town Hall meeting that we used to have in the early times of our country, where folks would get together and discuss the pros and cons of virtually everything. And this is a creature of county ordinance. Scott, it's not mandated by any state law, is it?
No, this is, this is strictly the county's discretion, how it chooses to process these zoning text amendments up to the Board of Supervisors.
Where I'm getting hung up a little bit is in the requirement for 60 days. You know, are we creating a right here or some sort of a, I don't hate to say a statutory right, but would we be better off to, to say, you know, as soon as practicable or in a reasonable time or something to that effect, also with the turnaround time, to phrase it in something that's more permissive than mandatory?
This, I think what the staff is presenting to the, to the commission here today is a concept, and we'll take your comments and bring them back so when it goes to the board to make sure the timeframes work, that the county-initiated project words are not going to be in there. It's going to be zoning text amendments and other modifications of the zoning ordinance. So we'll craft it into an ordinance level to make sure that it gives both adequate notice to the MACs and adequate opportunity for the MACs to respond back.
Is the concept of notice defined by state statute, or can we define our own notice requirements?
In this instant, you can define your own manner of notice of the MACs.
The reason that I go there is in many of the new contracts that are coming out, notice, you know, where one party has to give notice to the other is also clarified to include email. The points that were raised here about not checking the mailbox or meeting every other month, that's a real issue. We're dealing with volunteers, people who have their own lives to live, and they don't see these things until the very last second. And Jeff, there have been many times when we've had things come up here that haven't been seen by the MAC, and we've stopped the process and sent it back because their input is important. What I'd suggest, or I'd like to see in an ordinance like this, is to broaden it a bit and at least set, set the standard now where we can include email. For example, for privacy purposes, I don't know that I want to have an email address for each MAC member posted somewhere on the county website, but if we could have, you know, like whacmac@placer.ca.gov and have somebody check that mailbox, or Sheridan MAC, or something to that effect, have it come in here and then somebody like Kathy would, or Pat, would then redistribute these notices to all the MAC members. I think that would be a real plus in terms of, in terms of notice, because I know the MACs will check the mailboxes if they, indeed they have one. So, Crystal, if you could incorporate that concept into this ordinance, I think it's a, I think it's a great idea. Did my comments generate any other comments?
It makes sense to me. I'm still not sure, clear on what is going to be included and what's not going to be included in the notification to the MACs. If you could clarify that a little closer for me, Paul, or, Crystal, I'm sorry.
Is your microphone on?
Um, we, this, again, was just sort of a concept that we came up with. It's very much in draft form. And, and we welcome any, with respect to the timing, you know, of notification, if you want to remove the timing of the notification, we would welcome any of those comments or suggestions.
My comment, oh, over here. This one, I don't know. My comment is, I'm still not clear as to what would be sent out to the MACs and what wouldn't be sent out to the MACs. Yeah.
Good morning. I'm Jennifer Montgomery, District Five Supervisor, and this largely came from concern from the District Five MACs initially, but has kind of picked up speed with the other MACs as well. The, the intention behind this is to make sure that the ZTA specifically, which are not addressed anywhere specifically in existing documentation at the county, get out, the information about the ZTA's get out to the MACs in a timely fashion. Right now, Mickey, in answer to, to your question, anything that's like a project, it's a, a new construction, whether it's privately proposed through a developer or whether the county does it, goes to the MACs because it's a project. What has happened with ZTA's in the past is sometimes they've gone to the MACs, sometimes they haven't gone to the MACs, sometimes they've gone to the MACs before they go to the Planning Commission, sometimes, as in the case of the medical marijuana ZTA, they've gone to the MACs after the Planning Commission. What, what we're asking to do here, or what the MACs have asked me to ask you and my fellow board members to do, is to essentially codify the process. So what we're looking for from you is direction saying, "Yeah, we think things should go to the MACs and we think this is an appropriate timeframe, ZTA specifically," because basically everything else already goes to the MAC. If it's a, if it's a developer-pushed ZTA, because it's tied to a development, it goes to the MAC by definition now. So this is just filling a gap where we didn't really have a handle on what the appropriate process was. And what Crystal's really looking for today is input from you guys on whether you think 60 days is appropriate, whether you think a 15-day timeframe is appropriate. We do everything in District Five by email. We have our post office boxes. We're going to let them lapse after they expire this time around at the request of our MACs. So the way we envision this process working, if it goes forward and it is approved, is the zoning text amendments would go to Pat Mulberg, my district aide. She would then distribute them to the MACs and say, "This is a zoning text amendment that's going through the county process. Do you want to hear it? Reply to me." So those MAC members would reply to the district aide. And if the MAC is interested in hearing it, then we would let Planning know that our MAC would like to hear it. There are some MACs who didn't want to hear it. The medical marijuana ZTA is a prime example. All the MACs in District Five wanted to hear it. A number of the MACs in the south end of the county didn't want to hear it. And, and that is, that is still the process that would be creating here. It would not require that every ZTA go to every MAC. What it does is it requires we notify the MACs about the ZTA's and ask them if they want to hear it. Does that help?
Immensely.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. I guess I'm puzzling a little bit here. If I could have a moment. Let me see, on the 15-day- Let me see, on the 15-day timeframe, to me, it seems like, you know, if it goes to a MAC and they kind of think about it, and after 15 days, they decide that they want to hear, you know, from a county staff on a proposed ZTA, you know, why wouldn't, why wouldn't they have the opportunity to hear it, I guess? It seems like that would be, the 15-day, I'm just puzzling, I guess, a little bit of why we have that in there.
This, the reason that that was in there is staff had considered a timeframe in order to kind of keep the project moving forward, you know, so that we could have a timeline established and keep meeting those timelines. We are not set on this 15-day, and again, would welcome, you know, if you wanted to remove the timeframes altogether or change that 15-day, or just remove that, the timeframe for which the MACs are required to respond, we certainly would be open to that.
Yeah, my question, 15 days from what?
From the time of notice.
How about substituting a reasonable time? Because they may.
Let me finish here, I guess.
Ah, you hit the same point.
Well, maybe, I don't know. I guess I'm thinking that 60 days seems reasonable, and there may be times, because of feedback you're getting from a MAC, that you may want to even extend that 60 days before it comes at the commission. But, anyway, I guess I'm thinking that if, if a MAC takes 30 days or even 45 days, and then all of a sudden they realize that this is going to be an impact that needs to be discussed, it seems to me that the county would want to hear from the MAC at that point. So I guess I'm suggesting that we drop the 15-day requirement.
Yeah, because I guess, I sort of look at it like we work here, where we get our packet of information, we go over it, we come to the meeting, we make a decision. And one of my questions, and I really never asked it of any of the MAC people that came up, when, if you had 60 days that you knew that a certain item was going to be coming before the Planning Commission, that you could notify all the interested parties that you're having your next MAC meeting and you're going to bring this item up, if you vote on it that night, you have your meeting, and then I'm sure you vote, then it's sort of a done deal. So you don't need 15 days after you've talked about it or whatever to think about it to move forward. You've made your recommendation. That's what, I guess that is what I'm assuming you're doing. So I can see the 60 days for the county to give the MACs the information, and then they have their meeting and, you know, notify their people.
Ken, if you wouldn't mind, let me clarify that. The 15-day timeframe would be 15 days from the time the district aide notified the MAC members about the issue. For the MAC members to get back to the district aide and say, either yes, we're interested in having that come and be presented to our MAC, or no, we're not interested in having it come. That's what the 15-day piece would be. Am I correct in that, Crystal? That's correct.
In the 60 days, because I'm seeing 60 days there.
It's 60 days total. 60-day notification, meaning in 60 days, the Planning Commission is probably going to hear this. The 15 days is specific to the MAC getting back to the district aide and saying, yes, we want to hear it, or no, we don't want to hear it.
So Jennifer, what happens when the notice comes in, or the request comes in on day 16?
And that's something you can certainly change. 15 days, as Crystal said, is, that's an arbitrary figure that they're proposing. That's, you guys can say, we think it should be 30 days, or we don't think you should put a day limit on it at all. I understand Crystal's reason for wanting to do that in terms of just scheduling, if nothing else, with 13 MACs, if all 13 MACs want to hear something. You'd probably like to hear back in a timely fashion that they want to hear it, so you can just start even getting it on people's calendars.
Yeah, that's why I was suggesting that we put, that the MACs shall respond in a reasonable time, or something to that effect, and it'll be a matter of discretion.
Again, I think we can wordsmith this. I think what you're talking about is 15, within 15 days, or as soon as practicable after receiving notice.
Yeah. Conversely, the 60-day notice would be something to the effect at the earliest point possible as opposed to 60 days of creating a right.
Because again, the idea here is you want to have some kind of deadline, so people know they got to respond, so people pay attention to it, so you don't get a response back on the 59th day they want to hear it. So the idea is to get people to pay attention to it, but if they don't make it within 15 days, obviously, the planning staff wouldn't.
Aren't MACs and deadlines oxymorons? You know, I was on the MAC, and just like they said, they don't check the mailboxes, and oh my God, look at this, this, 50 days ago, we got this notice. So, you know, we need to be flexible. Jeff?
If we use the 15-day time period, and the MAC member.
I don't know, I use, just talk loud.
If the timeframe for 15 days is used, and there isn't a MAC meeting scheduled within that, then what you're putting the MAC members in is a position of pulling each other independently outside a meeting to decide if this is something they want to address in a meeting?
That's why I'm saying that's.
No, it's my understanding that the board aide would send an email to the various MAC members and ask, or a phone call, asking them if they had interest in hearing this item, and then they would calendar it accordingly.
I think, it's not a polling on the merits of the issue, it's just simply a scheduling matter to determine whether or not they wish to schedule it at the next hearing.
Because I guess, my thought, 60 days is, sort of works, because if the county comes up and they send information out on the second of the month, and the MAC just had their meeting the first of the month, it's, you know, it could be 29, 30 days before they meet. And that's why the 60 days. Now, the 15-day turnaround, you know, once they meet, you know, they have to let the county.
That's not what it says.
Yeah, and that's, I guess that's where.
Mr. West, did you want to say something else? I'm going to allow you to speak because it's important.
Yeah, thank you very much. I just, one comment, and this is speaking for myself. I think we should all, community people should be involved. With that involvement comes responsibility, and I think we should hold ourselves and each other to a higher standard. There should be a deadline. If you use words like reasonable or appropriate, that's ambiguous, and it doesn't make it sound very important. My wife sends out billing for my contracting business. We don't say, send back a payment when it's, you know, appropriate or reasonable. You've got 10 days to pay this bill. You have 10 days, 15 days, whatever, to respond to the county, saying whether or not you want this issue on your agenda. We can always decide, oh, we've got more information, and we really don't want it, and we can pull it off the next agenda if we want to. That actually potentially gives you up to 45 days.
What do you think about the email notice part?
That's great. I don't mind that at all. That's one thing that speeds it up. We read our emails, and most people I know, they read their emails every day, a lot of them let them pile up, but things that are important to us, we read them and we respond. And there are a lot of people, and Forest Hill specifically, from what I understand, we're the really the only ones that get a consistent 30 to 40 people every month at every meeting. And that's not just because I'm the chairman. This has been going on for a long time, so.
Go ahead.
I think these deadlines are reasonable. I misunderstood at first. I thought the 15 days was after the issue was heard at the MAC, 15 days to respond with a letter, which would be reasonable to me, too. We usually get them out within a couple of days. But, well.
They're talking about 15 days after you get notice.
Yeah, which is fine, because, especially since Pat's, or whoever the aide is, is going to send it to all MAC members. It doesn't violate the Brown Act.
If you're using the old mailbox rule, it didn't make any sense if.
No, because, you know, the previous chairman had it on his desk. We didn't hear about the correspondence till the next meeting.
And we know that happens, because this happened a lot.
The email's great. If it goes to each MAC member, everybody knows about it. Nobody's going to complain about the Brown Act, you know, we're cabotzing about what's going to be on the agenda. And then, I like the timeline because we need to be held to a higher standard. There's been a lot of scheduling gripes, and if it's codified, to be specific, then that hopefully will be eliminated.
Okay, thank you, Mr. West. Rich?
Okay, I want to maybe go back a little bit. I remember we were dealing with an ordinance that had to do with homeless shelters, and it seems to me the reason that we need this is because when we were having our hearing on that, there was a member of a MAC that came forward and said that they didn't have a chance to hear it, and they wanted that opportunity as a MAC. And so to me, then, that's the problem that we're trying to prevent, that we, that the MACs have an opportunity to consider these ZTA's before they get to the Planning Commission. And so I guess along those lines, I think the 60-day notice is reasonable notice, that in 60 days, this could be coming before the Planning Commission. And to me, it seems like that's enough of a deadline, right there. And it puts it at the discretion of the various MACs if they want to call down and invite somebody to come up and give an explanation so that they can vote on it. I guess the 15-day limit, to me, seemed like it might confuse the process. You know, some are going to be on email, some are going to be on snail mailboxes and whatever else, but to put that 15-day requirement puts, to me, a lot of pressure. And I can see a benefit, even if a MAC comes in on the 59th day and say, we want to hear this, then it's, would be to the county's benefit to delay the process, maybe just another timeframe until the MAC can hear it. So I guess what I would propose is that we just have the one 60-day limit in the ordinance.
Come on up.
Ready to identify myself again?
Yeah.
Okay, Richard Tallyferro, I live in the own incorporated area of Colfax. I'm on the MAC, the MAC in that area. My opinions are my own, not necessarily reflective of the MAC. I may have confused the issue a little bit by bringing up the 42-cent stamp. Obviously, that's not working for some people. Pat Malberg was very clear on that. The 15 days is for notification to the members of the MACs. That has been working, at least in District 5, extremely well. We've, other than the medical marijuana issue, which you voted on before, we were hearing it. I've been on the MAC since February of '09, and our sermon has been very clear and responsive. This has worked extremely well. Those are two separate issues, and I'm just trying to clarify it. The 15-day timeframe for which the MACs are required to respond would actually assist in projects moving along, correct, Crystal? Because people need a chance to, you know, like, if there's a zoning text amendment, and there's no timeframe, that could potentially hold up a project or an amendment, right?
The intent was so that if we didn't hear back from the MACs, after that 15 days, we could just move forward.
Right, and that may be a good thing to keep in there. That's what I'm hearing from Pat, who has been doing an excellent job of notifying the MACs through email. I don't suspect there'll be any problems with snail mail in the future. Forest Hill was probably one of the more remote areas. Yeah. So I would, I would just, I'm just trying to clarify and recommend that that's probably a good idea. I may have confused the issue by bringing up the 42-cent stamp.
Didn't confuse anything. We're just talking about notice and timeframes. A lot of the MACs don't check their mailboxes as regularly as you.
Wow, okay.
So we have to accommodate them all. Thank you.
Anyway, that might be a good idea to stay.
You're holding your fingers two inches apart, meaning a short comment?
Yep.
Well, wait, wait a minute, wait a minute. No, not you. Mrs. West, if you want to speak, come up after her. Go ahead, I want.
I just, I wasn't sure what that 60-day notice was for. Now that I know it's for the Planning Commission, I like that clarification. I agree with Mr. Johnson, that 15-day, if it's eliminated, would really make this stronger because people go on vacation, the aide could be on vacation, the MAC members could be on vacation, and to put a limit of a 15-day is, you know, if you're going to do it, make it more than two weeks, because a lot of people go on two weeks' vacations.
MACs don't move that fast.
Thank you.
Okay, I got it. Okay, Mrs. West, now we're going to cut it off and do something. We've got chicken folks here.
I agree with the 15-day, because they might be on vacation, but you don't need every single MAC member to say, yes, we want it. If you have a majority that wants it, that's fine. Maybe it would sound better, though, MACs are required to respond to the notification if they choose to schedule it on their agenda. Because we're discussing this today, but this is going to be in the MAC handbook, and if they haven't heard the discussion between all of us, they're not, it doesn't make a lot of sense.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody have any comments on this thing? Preferences? Jeff, Rich?
Well, I have preferences, the 15-day timeframe be rethought, only because it does seem to put an arbitrary.
Are you looking for a number or for verbiage?
Number.
Okay.
I'm going, I'm thinking 31, simply because if they have a meeting every month, that gives them at least one day to have, when it's put in, everybody gets to go to the meeting and hear about it.
Okay.
That's all.
Jeff?
I think if you extend the 15-day period, you're going to have to extend the 60-day in order to let things happen with all the MACs in a timely fashion, especially since we have some that don't meet every month and that kind of thing. If you give them 30 days to respond and request to be heard, you're not going to be able to then complete the process in a 60-day timeframe.
What would you recommend? Leave it at 15?
I think 15 is fine if there is good communication between the MACs and county staff, you know, assuming that they know how well that works.
Yeah, again, if I might suggest, we're hearing a lot of comments here, and I think what we're trying to do is we're trying to wordsmith an ordinance to fit 13 MACs today here. I think staff can do that, having heard some of the comments here and some of the concerns, to make sure it works in light of the input that we receive from the public.
Okay, well, then, let's do this. I don't think we need to necessarily vote on this. What I'd like to recommend for my fellow commissioners is that we ask this to be wordsmithed and come back again for a revisit before we take any action to set it up to the supervisors. Crystal, you have enough information to kind of get a sense for what's going on?
Certainly.
Okay. And I, personally, I would like to see the email, you know, I hate to use the word, but codified, I mean, brought into the ordinance itself so that we start setting up the system that we can rely on in the future. Not sure how that would work, but, you know, maybe specifying that it goes to the district aides and they send it out, or something to that effect. Now's the time to start bringing these into the 21st century. Any additional comments before we?
Yeah, the only other thing I could think of, just as a point of information, is it might be able to use that 15-day timeframe from the time that they were notified at a meeting. If there's a MAC meeting on the first, then they got 15 days from that meeting to respond, not just from when you get notified, because that way they have a set time to start from.
Okay, consider that, Crystal.
And they're all being notified at the same time at the meeting.
Consider that when you're putting your things together, and I think as a board, we specifically like to include the MACs to the extent possible because their input is important. We get a lot of feedback in a positive sense from what they have to say at that level. Okay, if there's nothing else, let's take a quick five-minute break, and then we'll proceed with the poultry ordinance.
They control a MAC in their media room.
There's too much.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, let's proceed with the last matter on our agenda, and that's a workshop on the zoning text amendment for the fowl and poultry ZTA. Charlene, are you doing this one?
Yeah, thank you. Yes, the item before you is the zoning text amendment for the fowl and poultry, zoning text amendment. And, oops, going the wrong way. And to start out, it might be good to discuss what the existing ordinance is for fowl and poultry for Placer County. Right now, in the residential agricultural farm and agricultural exclusive zone districts, you can have up to 100 animals. Again, that's fowl and poultry, so it can include turkeys, chickens, what have you. In the combined agricultural zone district, provided you have half an acre, and in the residential forestry zone district, provided you have one acre, you can go up to 24 animals per acre. And then if you have more than 100 animals, then you're a chicken-turkey ranch, and you need to get a use permit, provided you're in the farmer agricultural exclusive zone district. Again, the fowl and poultry regulations are part of the animal raising and keeping provisions of the zoning ordinance, and the purpose of this section is to minimize potential adverse effects on adjoining properties from the establishment and incompatible uses related to the keeping of animals. And there's a variety of ways that the zoning ordinance uses to minimize the potential for land use conflicts. The primary one is to restrict another animals in a zone district. Again, whether it's cattle, hogs, chickens, cats, dogs, if you go through the zoning ordinance, if it's permitted in a zone district, you'll find, there's generally a limit and a number established for that. There's also a section in this animal raising and keeping that addresses odor and vectors. There's also a section in the animal sanitation section of County Code that requires waste to be removed, at least every three days, and removed from the site at least once a week. There's nuisance animals, which normally are the noisy animals, could be roosters, donkeys, what have you, but if there is some type of a nuisance, there is revision in the zoning ordinance to deal with that, that potential problem. Erosion and sedimentation, generally that's more for the larger animals, larger hooded animals. If you get too many, there could be a problem with that, so the zoning ordinance does address that. And in some cases, there's a permit requirement, whether it's an administrative review permit or some type of use permit. And then there's animal enclosures. If someone wanted to have an animal enclosure, we have some rules stating basically that an animal enclosure needs to meet setbacks. It also needs to be located closer to your home than your neighbor's home, with the idea that if there's any potential problems, you're going to be the one most affected by it than your neighbor.
Charlene, what...
Yes?
What exists in the zoning regulations having to do with noise? We had a proposed animal noise ordinance once upon a time that kind of went away.
Well, I would think...
And remember Happy the Mule?
Yeah, Happy the Mule.
Yeah, I think part of the issue was us.
Well, I think there was an issue with brain donkeys, and I think that's, and again, we have code enforcement people here who've actually dealt with that. And it actually went to mediation, so that was part of the nuisance animal section that they worked with, and went to mediation. I don't know how it was resolved, but there was a mechanism for noise, and it was ultimately resolved.
Well, I was just getting the sense that the resolution or the, the way of addressing noise in the code is rather minimal. Would that be accurate?
Well, I know from talking to code enforcement, in regards to chickens, that's been my focus. Generally, complaint when it's submitted, it's been on roosters. When they go out and dress the complaint, because they may be allowed to have it in their, per their zone district, but yet it becomes a noise problem. They norm, normally, people tend to get rid of the, the rooster. So, again, I think in the past 10 years, when it has come to a noise issue, it only went to mediation once. In, in theory, if that's happened, then the other one should have been resolved. So I would almost, so if it's, if it's minimal, it seems like it has worked. And again, I might...
What does the ordinance say?
Well, for nuisance, it's section 17.56.050H1, said, "Whenever an animal produces noise determined by a county enforcement official with appropriate jurisdiction to be unusually loud and continues such noise-making activity for an unreasonable period of time, the enforcement official shall notify in writing the owner of the animal or any other party responsible for the animal to quiet the animal so as to eliminate the nuisance." And then it talks about procedures. And, again, we have used, if they, if the code enforcement officer isn't able to resolve the issue and there's still a complaint, then it goes to, to a mediation process.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Okay. Now, we've been directed to prepare a zoning text amendment to the fowl and poultry section of the ordinance. Again, we were directed to have it applied to single-family residential zone districts. And when we started this, we, very early in the process, we realized that multifamily should be included, too. If you look at this section of the code, single-family residential uses and multifamily all have been allowed the same type of uses when it comes to animal keeping. There's a lot of single-family uses that are permitted in the multifamily zone district. And again, we were directed to prepare this ordinance and allow it to three chicken hens, prohibit roosters, guinea hens, peacock hens. And again, we realized peacock hen isn't the right term, it's actually peahen, we'll work with that, but we wanted to make sure, most people may not know what a peahen is, we're trying to make it accurate, yeah, get the information out there. Also, proposing administrative review permit. Again, we're taking a very conservative approach. Chickens have traditionally been somewhat of an agricultural use, so we wanted to, to at least start out requiring administrative review permit. It is a county process, it doesn't involve a public hearing, but, but notices are sent out, there is a $55 fee for the permit, a, a staff person will provide an evaluation, and the zoning administrator makes the decision. This is still a discretionary permit, but it doesn't involve public hearings. Also, chickens are to be, required to be kept on-site, so we don't have a Fair Oaks situation where they're allowed to walk around the city. And we also originally wanted this to be part of the countywide, which would include the Tahoe Basin, Tahoe, TRPA has some requirements that prohibit chickens right now. You need to have at least two acres up in the Tahoe Basin to keep chickens. They're working on amending the regulations. We have written them to consider looking at chickens as part of that update, but right now, this zoning text amendment would not include the Tahoe Basin. Again, when we started looking at this, and fairly early in the process, we realized that we're now, if this was approved, we'd be making the single-family residential and multifamily actually less restrictive when it came to the keeping of chickens than the combined ag and the residential forestry. Again, there's an established hierarchy in the zoning ordinance where the single-family residential, multifamily will be your most restrictive zone district when it comes to the keeping of animals. So to prevent this potential problem, we expanded the ZTA to include the combined ag district. Again, we wouldn't require an ARP and allow up to six chicken hens on parcels less than half an acre. And the same thing with the residential forestry, but allowing up to 12 chickens if you have an acre or less. And just to provide some background about how this ZTA came about, there are several citizen requests. There was one in particular that was actually a violation. Someone had chickens and roosters. The, the person got rid of the roosters, but felt very strongly about his right to be able to raise his own food, have his own eggs, for health reasons. And actually, according to the code enforcement officer, actually wanted to be cited so he could have his day in court to argue his right to be able to grow his own food. So this obviously got the attention of the county. Again, it's a, there's a movement out there called locally grown, among many other things, to have, be able to raise your own chickens. There's a lot of websites out there for urban chicken keeping, I think I listed them in the staff report. There's actually one for an underground movement if your jurisdiction doesn't even allow you to have chickens. So it seems, there's a lot of information out there. And one thing that surprised me when we started doing the research, how many cities actually allow the keeping of, of chickens, chicken hens, not roosters? And some of the local ones are Roseville, Folsom, Auburn, San Diego, Venetia, and Long Beach also, but I would say there's at least 40 more urban jurisdictions that allow for the raising and keeping of chickens. And just to give you some comparison for what type of animals are already allowed in the RS and multifamily zone districts, there's aviaries. And the indoor aviary is not something inside someone's house, it's still an accessory structure outside, but it has solid walls, and there's no limit to the number of birds you can have. I think maybe something about parrots, but overall, there's no limit. And then if you have an, an outdoor aviary, which is more like you don't have solid construction but some open, and I think that might be dealing more with the noise issue, there is a limit, you need to have at least 5,000 square feet of lot area, and then you can have up to 24 parrots, 40 doves, and up to 150 canaries. You can have dogs and cats, you can have up to four, but if you have between five and eight, you need to get an administrative review permit. And then for household pets, that would include up to four pot-bellied pigs and pig and goats. Again, this has been reviewed by all the different MACs in the county, plus the Agricultural Commissioner. The benefit of doing this is that we got some new issues were raised that I don't think staff would identify it on our own. The downside of doing that was that the, the recommendations were all across the board. Squaw Valley MAC did not want the chicken ordinance. There were like, three, they didn't want to take action until they got some more information. And all the other ones were basically in support of some type of chicken ordinance, maybe not what was proposed, but they did have some recommendations on how to amend the zoning text amendment. And again, to list some of those issues that were raised was eliminating the administrative review requirement, establishing a minimum lot size requirement, add the resort, resort zone district to the ZTA. And then this, this one actually was not discussed, but came back, as a result of reviewing all the different recommendations, and that was establishing a chicken hen per lot area standard. And then there was also recommendation to allow up to 24 chicken hens on lots greater than 40,000 square feet, increasing the number of chickens from three to six. There are a lot of animal welfare issues that were raised. People were concerned about disattracting predators and rodents, and then the impact on Placer County agencies. And so we can start by talking about the first item. And again, the way, again, this is a workshop, and what I like to do is just kind of go through the presentation, then open it up to public comment, discussion, and at the very end, you can give staff direction on some of these items. The main, the first one is eliminate the administrative review requirement. There were some people who were supportive of this, and their main concerns were that it would provide mechanism for oversight if problems were to develop, and it would also help to attack on the number of chickens. And those against the administrative review permit requirement felt it was excessive in light of the other animals permitted in the zone district. You would need an ARP if you have up to like your fifth dog, but one chicken would require it. So there, there was some concern that there may have been a little inconsistency in the logic there. There's also a $55 filing fee, and, and some people thought this would discourage people from applying. And from looking at the other jurisdictions, then you have Attachment C that provides a partial list of the different jurisdictions in California that provide for chickens. Only a few have a permit requirement, and when I went and talked to them, it's more of a discretionary, I mean, a ministerial type of permit, to where if they actually met the, the standards, they can have the chickens. And so the permit is just a, to pay for someone to go out and just verify that they, their coop met setbacks, where they had the right number of chickens. Where the administrative review permit is a discretionary permit. And again, we, we started this process taking a conservative approach, but basically, from looking at what other jurisdictions are doing, I would say, the raising of chickens appeared to be more of a quasi-agricultural type use rather than a straightforward agricultural use. So therefore, from reviewing all this, staff would be supportive of eliminating the ARP requirement for the RS zone district. Yes?
The other side of that coin is why aren't you supportive of the RM district?
Well, we'll, we'll get to that, but, but when we came and, and did this, it was always intended for single-family residential uses, not for apartments. So with an ARP requirement, you, you could still screen out potential multifamily users unless, I mean, there's always the possibility that someone could come up with something that really took care of all the land use issues, but, but by and large, it was intended for single-family uses. And the next one would be to establish a minimum lot size requirement, and if we ended up with that, then that would take care of the, the concerns about it going into apartments or multifamily projects. So, so pretty much, there, there's ways to deal with having chickens in, in multifamily projects, it's just figuring out what the best way to proceed. And then the next one is establish a minimum lot size requirement. This was supported by the Granite Bay MAC, Forest Hill Farm and Agricultural Commission. The minimum lot size requirement would be recommended, especially if the ARP requirement went away for the RS and RM zone district, that would still give you some parameters on how to base the, the chicken keeping. Again, minimum lot size requirement ensures that you have some proper amount of area for the, the chicken coop. And we came up with 5,000 because it appeared to be consistent with the outdoor aviary requirement, where you need to have at least 5,000 square feet for your outdoor aviary. So it seemed like an outdoor aviary and a chicken coop would be somewhat similar.
Charlene? I guess my question is, not so much, when you say a lot size versus open lot...
Mm-hmm.
Because you can have a 5,000-square-foot lot and have, you know, four, you know, 40, 500-square-foot house on that lot that takes up the whole thing, and yet you could have a, you know, on a 2,500-foot lot, you could have an 800-square-foot house...
Yeah.
And still have plenty of outdoor area to put in a, a chicken house and stuff. Just an observation.
Yeah. You still need to meet, if you have a chicken coop, you still need to meet setbacks. That, that's the other factor in here that could limit if you, if you overbuilt, built a lot.
Okay, I guess just my...
Yeah.
Thing is, is what is the open...
Yeah.
Outdoor space?
And obviously, that's something that can be discussed.
Yeah.
Another item that came up, and actually came up the Medevista MAC, was to include resort zoning. There are some areas up in Medevista, particularly Lake Commie, that is zoned, resort. And the purpose is basically, the resort zoning is applied to mountainous areas, water-oriented, or other areas of significant natural amenities with commercial potential. And the resort zoning right now allows for cattle, horses, llamas, and, and basically other farm animals. Single-family homes are permitted in that zone district, and so this is something, I don't think staff would have came up with this as a possibility to include in the zoning text amendment, but seeing what's already permitted in that zone district, it seems like it would be logical to extend chicken hens into that, that category. So we're, we're supportive of that, besides a, a recommendation. And then this is the establishing a chicken hen per lot area standard. This really came out basically when I was wrapping up the staff report. There, there's so many, the, the, there's a great variation in lot sizes for the single-family residential zone district. You can go anywhere from 3,000 square feet. The American Vineyard Village Project out in the Dry Creek area west Placer was approved with 3,000 square feet minimum lot... The American Vineyard Village project out in the Dry Creek area west Placer was approved with 3,000 square feet minimum lot sizes. And you can go up to 2.3. There are areas zoned RSB 100, which would be a 2.3 acre minimum lot size. So trying to come up with this one number that we've been trying to, you know, discuss and figure, basically, it comes down to does one size really fit all? And it seemed like that some of the MACs or some of the areas where they wanted, you know, to make, allow for more chickens or have larger lot areas, there was a correlation. Those tended to be more rural areas or areas where they had larger lots. Whereas some of the smaller lot areas didn't necessarily support having more chickens. So kind of wrestling around with that, it came up, well, why not have a standard? So the more property you have, the more chicken hens you could possibly have. And that way, you can help deal with the potential land use compatibility impacts by having too many chickens. And just looking at other jurisdictions, the ones I've seen have, I think Albany, and another jurisdictions has like one chicken hen per 1,000 square feet or one chicken hen per 1,800 square feet. Obviously, that's a, that would allow for a lot of chickens in Placer County. So I came up, what I proposed would be one hen for every 2,500 square feet. That would allow for up to four hens on basically a quarter acre lot, or 17 hens on one acre. If you had a 3,000 square foot standard, that'd be three hens on an acre and 14 hens on one acre. And again, we talked about there's a hierarchy in how the zone districts are in Placer County. So we always have to keep in mind that whatever is permitted in RS and RM, it would always have to be less than what's permitted in the other more agricultural districts in the county. Right now, the declining ag and RF allow for 24 hens per acre. And that gives you a standard of about one hen for every 1,800 square feet, just to keep that in mind.
I want to know how it is three hens on a quarter acre end up as 14 on an acre. Is that new math?
Well, it's, it, I, for spacing, I was trying to say from 10,000 square feet. So approximately, so it's.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
We're paying attention. You just wanted to see, right?
Yeah, yeah, between space and, but that's what the calculator said. So we are supportive of establishing a chicken hen area standard. But we still feel like if that, if we go that way, we definitely need to get a maximum hen standard or limit established. So if you have 2.3 acres, it's, it's still, you can be allowed chickens. But again, we have that, the RS trying to be less restrictive in the keeping of animals than some of the other zone districts. So it becomes a little bit of a number game when you start playing with the numbers and looking at the other zone districts. So that's kind of the balancing act, that kind of going through when we're looking at what type of standard we would have. Again, there are some questions about allowing 24 hens on lots greater than 40,000 square feet. This was raised at the Ag Commission. The example that was used was Todd Valley. Again, Todd Valley, about half of Todd Valley is, it's all single-family residential primarily, but half of it seems to have a combined ag and half of it doesn't. And this has a straight RS. And I can't quite get the history of how that came about. But that was an example that was used. And it seems like if we stayed at the three chicken hens per lot, you could certainly, a 40,000 square foot lot could certainly accommodate that. So again, we're supportive of increasing the number of permitted chickens. But again, we still need to keep in mind of the numbers that are permitted in the combined ag and the residential forestry and other zone districts. And then increasing the maximum number of hens from three to six. Again, this would be something to discuss if the hen per lot area standard isn't supported. Again, we originally came up with three because that seemed like what a typical family may eat a day, provided they probably have younger hens. The younger the hen, the more likely they are to lay eggs. Most of the jurisdictions in California allow anywhere between two and 20 chickens. Again, we have some concerns on some of the smaller lots, raising the maximum. If you have like a 5,000 square foot lot, that may be too many. That was one concern about with this proposal. And if we did have a chicken hen lot area standard, and you could probably have a maximum anywhere from like six to 20. It's kind of hard to come up with a number, and maybe we can get a better handle on that as part of this workshop. Animal welfare?
Let me see, that's in the RS district that you just were referring to?
Right, right. And whatever RS and RM, and then whatever is recommended, we may have to go back and do some adjustment of what's proposed in the combined ag and the RF zone district.
Charlene?
Yeah.
On, you said earlier that, say, on a small lot, you have a 2,500 square foot lot or whatever, that you have setbacks.
Right.
Certain setbacks for all this.
Right.
I don't know, I keep hearing all this, but I guess in my mind, I keep coming back because you have setbacks and everything else, that somewhere you must have a general idea of a footprint for the hen house and open space adjacent that contains the chickens within the setback of the property line versus going through all this where you could say, okay, for three chickens, you need 100 square feet with the hen house and open containment space for them to feed them and be out in the open, run around and everything. I mean, is, is, to me, that's where I would go with this versus, you know, you keep bringing up all these lot sizes and everything else. When you could, I'll go back, you can have a 5,000 square foot lot, 2,000 square foot lot, and actually have more open space on the 2,000 square foot lot than on the 5,000, where it's more how much open space do you need to contain three chickens, six chickens, whatever?
Yeah, and we didn't, if you look at the animal raising, keeping section, we pretty much talk about the number. We haven't required any type of shelter or enclosures to be required for any of those animals. We pretty much have relied on the property owner to be responsible for, if they want a shelter, to build the shelter. There may be some information here if we went that way. But if you, but if we went that way with trying to get some standards for the type of shelter that's required, then it would be kind of out of keeping with how rest of the, that section, the ordinance is written.
Okay, well, I'm not getting into any specifics, whether it's chicken wire cage or whatever. It's more because if you have setbacks, and then somebody turns their chickens out in the backyard, setbacks don't mean anything to the animals. So I guess in my mind, I'm saying there's got to be some kind of containment. And I know in, unless it's large acreage and stuff, most everybody I know has some kind of containment for their chickens. And when I say like a hen house, because most of them have a place to get the chickens in at night, so skunks and.
Right, and we would expect most people to have some type of enclosure.
Well, we would want it more than a wish, I would think. We'd almost have to have it. So I mean, the chicken wouldn't be able to just wander across the setback into the person's, next person's yard.
Right, they have to be kept on site. And this is where if they're on the property, you could have lean hens. They're so heavy, they're too heavy to fly. You'd have people that could clip them, and they wouldn't be able to fly.
No, I just mean about walking six inches across the setback.
You said property setback.
Right, it's kind of like, it's like a dog. You can, if you have a doghouse, the doghouse has to be outside of setbacks, but the dog could be freed to roam around the yard. And so I think with this chicken ordinance, you're, it's like with any other animal, it could pretty much wander around your yard. But the enclosure itself has to meet setbacks.
So there has to be an enclosure?
No, no, but if you have an enclosure, it would have to meet setbacks. Just like if you had a barn or.
If you didn't have an enclosure, the chicken could go where it wants.
You're talking fence, and you're talking building, I think.
Maybe that's it, maybe we're just sort of miscommunicating.
But I'm talking fence, the only reason I say it, because everybody I know that has it, usually they have a chicken house to get it in at night. And then during the day, they have a fenced off area. And I guess in my mind, that sort of takes care of a lot of the problems versus going through and trying to figure out, six chickens on 2,500 square feet or 4,000 square feet, whatever that, those numbers are, where pretty much you, you have some kind of a containment fence that if somebody has a small lot and their backyard is big enough to have that in the backyard, then fine, they can have their six chickens or whatever. And if a person has a half acre, but because of their house and all the other buildings, they have less square footage open space for the animals, then they, they don't get as many chickens. That's just my opinion.
Okay.
Question on, I guess, a little different subject. You mentioned earlier, you come up with a number of chickens based on how many eggs, I guess, you think a family can consume or what have you?
Yeah, it's just a rough guess, yeah.
Okay, but I mean, is that to say that this ordinance is only for people wanting to raise their eggs, so to speak, as opposed to somebody who might want to actually consume the chicken?
Well, there'd be no, right now, it has with anywhere else in animal raising, keeping section, there's no prohibition on slaughter. So if someone wanted them for meat, from reading all the websites and from talking to most people, most people seem to want them for the eggs. Okay? And then with animal welfare, again, most of the letters you receive definitely deal with the animal welfare issue. And these comments include requiring chicken hens be kept within a properly designed predator-proof enclosure, prohibiting slaughter, ensuring that the public is properly educated on how to properly raise chickens, ensuring that only diseased chickens be kept, and addressing the potential impact on animal shelters receiving unwanted chickens, including baby roosters. And saying that the animal raising and keeping section is really designed to minimize land use conflicts. And we don't really regulate how animals are to be raised. We pretty much limit to the number and how to address potential land use compatibility issues. Animal welfare is really in the purview of the Animal Regulations Code of the county. And basically, it states it's a violation to allow any animal to go without adequate food, water, shelter, or proper care. And if you should decide to make comments to the board about your concerns about the animal welfare, we would recommend that you transmit your concern. Again, your, the Planning Commission is set up to really make recommendations on zoning ordinance issues and land use projects. You're not really the body to recommend animal regulations to the board, but you can still transmit any concerns you may have as a result of this workshop for animal welfare. Again, there's been concerns about attracting predators or rodents that having chickens could provide. And basically, people are concerned about bears, mountain lions, raccoons, et cetera, or rodents coming into the neighborhood. And generally, I think this is kind of a rule, when you have any type of animal outdoors or you feed them outdoors or keep the food stored outdoors, you always have the potential of attracting predators and/or rodents. And again, there was also comments about to get rid of rodents and so forth, that there would be an inappropriate use of pesticides. And basically, I think anyone has concerns about inappropriate use of pesticides. Pretty much, you have to rely on people to follow the labels. Has with any, it's not just any dealing with rodents, dealing with chickens, but then any type of use of pesticides, that's a concern. And then there was concerns about the impact on county services. And there's three agencies that could be affected by this zoning text amendment, which would be the Agricultural Commissioner, Code Enforcement, Animal Services. The Ag Commissioner deals with trapping of wildlife. And from talking to the Ag Commissioner, they didn't really expect to see any impact to their agency if the ETA is adopted. And I also talked to Code Enforcement, and they're the agency that deals more like having the proper number of animals, nuisance animals, particularly with roosters. And they expect it to be more of a minimal impact. One way where this ordinance can help with Code Enforcement, although chicken, roosters seem to be the major complaint they receive, they also get complaints from people who have like a 4H project or Future Farmer of America, and they have some chickens and they don't have the right zoning. They need to go through the Ag Commissioner to get approval. So this zoning ordinance would help with that. And then Animal Services could be impacted. Right now, when it comes to chickens, they're mainly dealing with dogs at large killing chickens and chickens being surrendered to the animal shelter. There could be a buildup of odors from manure buildup. They foresee some mediation and processing complaints adding to their workload. And they expect approximately 200 hours of additional staff time. Again, this really isn't a planning issue. It's more of a county executive officer issue and budgeting. So, but this is something that has been raised, and we just wanted to bring up how, what type of agencies could be impacted. And with that, that concludes the comments from the Planning Department. We'd recommend that you go out and get comments from the public and have some discussions. And then we can wrap up by getting some direction on specific items that we've already.
Say, Charlene, before we let you go here, I just want to make sure that I can, in maybe simple terms, I understand this. In the residential district, you're talking about less than three chickens, right?
Right now, what's proposed is one to three chickens, a maximum of three.
In the combined zoning, it would be dependent on the acreage. If it's less than a, less than a half an acre, it would be three chickens. If it's less than an acre, it would be six, is that correct?
I believe that if it's less than a half acre in combined ag, we're looking at six. And if it's less than an acre in RF, we're looking at, we're throwing out 12. We're recommending 12. But again, all of that is subject to direction.
And if they have more than an acre, the limit is 20?
No, the limit would be 24 animals per acre, and they can have roosters on top of that.
That would be in the agriculture and forestry zoning, right?
Wait, even in combined ag, if you have more than half an acre, you can have chickens and roosters.
So if you're in the combined zoning, and you have more than half an acre, you can have 24 or 20?
You can have 24 per acre. So you have half an acre, you can have?
12.
12. But right now, if you have less than half an acre, you can't have any.
Okay, and for more than an acre, is there any limit?
It's 24 per acre. So if you have like an acre and a half, then it would be half of 20, 12. So it'd be, what, 36 chickens you could have, up to, you can't have more than 100. That is kind of the limit overall with the counting.
Okay, and so then the ultimate proposal is based on square feet and a chicken per 2,000?
That's one recommendation that we could go.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I just needed to kind of get this.
Yeah, there's a lot out there and a lot of numbers, so.
No kidding. Okay, gentlemen, any more questions for Charlene? Okay, we'll let you off the hook for now. I see the Agricultural Commissioner for Placer County is sitting behind you. Do you care to address the issue? We do have a letter from your organization in our packet.
Yes, Christine Turner, Placer County Agricultural Commissioner. I attended some of the MAC meetings in which this was presented, as well as it was presented to the Agricultural Commission. You have a copy of the Agricultural Commission's recommendations. One of the things that I was asked at the Granite Bay MAC is what I thought about this proposed ordinance. And so what I told the Granite Bay MAC is it seems like a lot of government regulation for three chickens, a lot of work and effort that's gone into for keeping of three chickens. As the Agricultural Commissioner, I've been really involved with the whole issues surrounding the local food movement. And I would say that, again, as Charlene mentioned, across the country, there are people who are really asking their governments to take a look at and change the restrictions so that people can become more self-reliant in providing for their own food, for teaching their children where food sources come from. I think that for some of the people who oppose the very concept of eating eggs or eating chickens, that's fine and good if that's the sort of lifestyle they want to choose. But I would argue that that's not the majority of people. And that the people who want to keep chickens can keep them for either their egg production for their families and/or to eat those chickens at the point in time where they no longer lay eggs or raise them for eating in the first place. eating in the first place. I think that that's an appropriate use of livestock, and I support that, and I support the recommendations that were forwarded to you from the Agricultural Commission, and I'll be here if you have any other questions.
Okay, thank you, Christine. Okay, at this point, I'm going to open it up to the public. The first one gets up to the microphone, gets to speak first, that's you. I thought Roy was going to be first.
I have to leave. I'm sorry, thank you very much. My name is Rosemary Freeborn, and I'm with the Humane Society of the Sierra Foothills. And I attended most of the MAC meetings where this was presented to speak on behalf of the animal welfare issues. And so I may be overestimating my nuisance factor, but I think this workshop is probably as a result of my colleagues in animal welfare raising some of these oppositions. I'm going to talk on four issues. First, the rights of the property owners in urban and suburban areas. Second, the discrepancies in the requirements of Chapter 17, that being raising and keeping of animals. Third, animal welfare. And fourth, the current fiscal impact on the county services. The right of property owners in urban and suburban areas. Granite Bay in October, November, put together a survey for their citizens in doing their, I believe, their general plan. One of the questions in there is CCNRs should not restrict the keeping of farm animals when developments, within developments, if permitted by land uses slash zoning. I looked at 10% of those responses, and I'm going to give you the results. They ranged from strongly agree to strongly disagree, and you filled, they filled in the little box. And these are rounded numbers. So 88% disagreed or strongly disagreed with that statement, and 11% were neutral. If we changed the wording on that from CCNRs to zoning and shorten it a little, it would say zoning should not restrict the keeping of farm animals within developments. I think that really says that people who buy in these areas with CCNRs or in residential single-family understand what they're getting, and that's what they don't want changed. And I think that it's key to me that the right to be free from farming activity is important to the people who have bought in residential, single-family areas.
I don't understand your comment. We're not addressing CCNRs here in private contract rights.
Correct. But I thought that their response on CCNRs, if you changed it to just zoning, whereas we're changing the laws, taking and overriding current laws in current areas, and people who have bought in there with the understanding that those are the, those are the laws, that somebody can't have chickens next door to me. That's what I would like in my area, and that's why I chose to live in a residential area as opposed to a farming zone.
So who's forcing you to have chickens? No, it doesn't.
My neighbor is. I'm being influenced by my neighbor's chickens coming up on my fence, my dogs, being annoyed by the chickens. Does that?
My business is in Roseville, and Roseville is one of the cities that has the chicken ordinance. And all the people I'm aware of that are next to people that have chickens, they don't really have an issue. I mean, I never hear anybody out there bringing up the concerns you have. I think Jerry brought up the concern of CCNRs and stuff in the community of Roseville. If CCNRs say no chickens, there's no chickens in that development. But in all the other areas where they allow them, I've never heard anything from animal control or any of the problems. I mean, I've read your letter here and stuff, and I understand. But, you know.
Okay, I'll move on to number two. Discrepancies in the requirements of Chapter 17, raising and keeping. Chapter 17 states it minimizes the potential adverse effects on adjoining property from the establishment of incompatible uses related to the raising and keeping of animals. And Chapter 17.56120 requires pot-bellied pigs, she mentioned that, pot-bellied pigs, pygmy goats, dogs, and cats to be kept in a residential accessory structure. So what I'm getting at here is there are requirements in Chapter 17 that regulate enclosures. Chapter 17.04030 addresses specific requirements for indoor and outdoor aviaries. And it says in part, indoor aviaries, an indoor aviary means a structure with all exterior walls being constructed, solid opaque material, plywood, concrete, very specific in the specifications in there. Yet, when we hear planning, they're saying animal control regulates those things. But in fact, Chapter 17 does call out some very good specifications for animals. So by example, it does regulate how animals are raised, and I believe this proposal falls short of that. I believe this is the tail sort of wagging the dog, and the dog being animal control and trying to catch up with the issues that are going to, or with the problems that are going to occur. Number three, animal welfare for both the hens and the nuisance animals attracted by the food and by the hens. And again, Prop 2, which was passed two years ago, 55% of Placer County voters and 63% of all California voters supported to, Prop 2, requiring a phase out of the current inhumane confinement of animals on factory farms. That doesn't mean that somebody that isn't really attuned to how to keep chickens aren't going to put them in a small cage. And so, again, an enclosure specified, I think, is appropriate. And finally, let's see, current fiscal impact on county services. I, you know, we've got furlough days, we've got layoffs pending, the shelter is now closed on Mondays, all of this budget crisis that we're having, and this is one more thing to impact animal control services and certainly code enforcement, is now really the time to bring this, roll this program out. So thank you for considering my comments.
Thank you, Rosemary. Appreciate your comments and your letter. Mr. West?
Roy West, Forest Hill. Basically, I'm going to boil it down to whatever recommendation is made and decision is made, I would like to see it as hands-off as possible. I'm kind of a libertarian thinker. Basically, make it so it's not illegal to have chickens. Whatever number they come up with, I agree with Christine Turner's recommendation. The one thing that I would add would be specify that apartment buildings and condominiums probably should not be allowed to have them. But as far as all the animal welfare things, let people make their own decisions in their own lives. They'll find out soon enough when their flowerbeds are torn up that they were going to enclose their chickens. And those are individual choices that they can make as they, you know, learn more about what it means to have them. And six chickens is not going to ruin the neighborhood, I don't think. I like Christine Turner's commission's recommendation. I support that.
Thank you. Christine, you've got one vote. Anybody else want to speak? Come right on up.
Hi, I'm Ariel Davis from Penron, and at the Penron MAC, there were expressed concerns about the increase in regulation with this zoning text amendment. And I want to have another vote for the ag commissioner. And I agree with the staff report's recommendations because when it was first presented at the MAC meeting, having a fee of $55 didn't make sense to many of people in the MAC, even though it wasn't on their minutes. And we don't have a fee for dogs, and there's four dogs, you can have up to four dogs, and they're a lot noisier than three little chickens. So I agree with eliminating this requirement, having even a permit process and even having the fee that goes along with the permit. The minimum lot size, I go along with the staff. You have to have some kind of a lot size since they can't really go around and measure open space, which would be nice, but they might want to set some kind of regulation. If that's what they need to eliminate town homes and apartments, like the other gentleman said, I can't see having chickens on a little teeny lot like they have in some of these townhomes, that there's only enough room for like six square feet. So if it's specifically specified, that would be great. The including of the resort zoning makes a lot of sense to me, the lot per standard, whatever. So far, I've been agreeing with what she has said. The increased number of chickens based on the fee, actually, sorry, I'm kind of rambling along. I don't think we should be regulating the sheltering of these chickens. I agree with the staff that it's, people are going to be putting, taking care of the chickens. We don't require shelters for the dogs, we don't require shelters for the cats. The cats go into the neighbors' yards all the time, and there's nothing, you know, you have to complain as it's needed. I think people have to, will take responsibility and take care of the chickens. And with having to worry about the pesticides and attracting animals, a lot of these people that have chickens have kids, and they want these eggs for the children, so they don't know, they don't know for sure where their eggs are coming from in the store. So I agree that this, we shouldn't be worried about it because people are going to be responsible. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I wasn't quite sure how a workshop works. Can we come back up later if we want to?
Oh, if you have something important to say, we'll allow it.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Thank you for giving me time to talk. My name is Dan Warren. I am the person who was asked, who asked to go to court for my three hens that I have. I actually own two hens. My neighbor has one hen that they keep in my chicken yard and chicken pen area.
Rent a hen?
There's a lot of great reasons why chickens, not only good health reason-wise, but as pets as well. There's many people that keep them as pets. My hens have become my pets, just as much as anybody's dog is their pet or cat is their pet. My chickens are my pets. It's interesting listening to you guys talk about setbacks and concerns like that. A lot of that's already kind of covered under aviaries, whether they be indoor or outdoor. You should just take what's already there and apply it to what's going forward. At least, I hope it's going forward in those manners. You know, some people look at chickens and they're like, well, they're farm animals, but I've never been to a farm that didn't have a dog or a cat. So, you know, what is the definition of a farm animal? Legally, California law defines a farm animal as any animal used for life, used for profit. Livestock is defined as, livestock is usually defined to refer to horses, mares, mules, jackasses, jennies, colts, cows, calves, yearlings, bulls, oxen, sheep, goats, lambs, kids, hogs, and pigs. What is a farm? According to the government, a farm is any place which $1,000 or more of agricultural products were produced or sold and normally would have been sold during census year. So a chicken is not really a farm animal. It's what you do with the animals that are on there. See, where was I going with that? We look at what we have that we are allowed to keep. On a 5,000-square-foot lot in an outdoor aviary, I can keep up to 114 birds, not hens included in that. That includes doves, canaries, and parrots. Now, remember, parrots, a typical domestic parrot weighs about six pounds. A typical hen weighs about six pounds. I'm allowed to keep 24 parrots with no special use permits, no zoning regulations that would permit or prevent me from doing that, nobody telling me how I'm supposed to clean up after them, how I'm supposed to care for them. I can keep 24 of them, same size as a chicken. If I have a 10,000-foot lot, which I actually live on an 11,000-foot lot, which is not untypical, my lot is 140 feet by 81 feet, I can keep 68 parrots legally right now with no special conditions put on that. What else are we allowed to keep? Well, we can have four dogs. Now, everybody loves dogs. I love dogs. I had an Alaskan Husky at one time. That Alaskan Husky needed a lot more acreage than 100 chickens would need to run. That dog loved to run, and most dogs do like open space. But we don't define how much open space you need for your dog to run. But we're sitting here talking about contemplating should you have a chicken pen of a certain size. So I think that needs to be kind of thrown out unless we want to be equal and fair to all animals that are in the ordinances. You also look at, people talk about avian flu, but the Center for Disease Control lists 17 different diseases that dogs carry and can spread, whereas they only list four that birds can spread and carry. There are 4.5 million dog bites reported every year in the United States. I couldn't find any statistics on how many chicken pecs were recorded in the United States. 885,000 of those required medical attention. 31,000 of those underwent reconstructive surgery. So when we're looking at impact of a hen versus what is allowed, which is a dog or cats or some other animals right now, it's so minor that it's not even a good comparison. There was a comment made about smell and fecal matter removal. Well, I can go down to the feed store and buy a 50-pound bag of chicken manure fertilizer. I can't do that with dog and cat manure because it's more toxic. In fact, there's a report that I have in this binder here that says that 20% of the waterways in the United States currently are not usable for recreational uses because of dog fecal matters that leaches into them. Yet, chicken manure you can buy at the feed store for your garden. Let's see, what other comments do I have in here?
Well, what's your point, that we shouldn't have a regulation at all?
Yeah, well, what I'm saying is that I think that we already have the regulations in place in the code here. So if you consider that, if you just took your ordinance you have here, and next to parrot, you wrote down hen, you have everything already in place. Because for some reason, sometimes somebody already did all the research and study, says this is okay, this is what we're accepting. Why not just, I mean, if a hen and a parrot are about the same impact, why not just put hen next to parrot? It's a very simple thing to do. Everything else in ordinance would apply that applies to what your aviaries and parrots or other birds are in here.
I have a question, because you said you contain your chickens? You have?
I do.
Okay, how, you've got two chickens, how many square feet of containment do you have?
I have a small chicken coop. It's about five foot by six foot, and they have about 400 feet of chicken pen area to run around in. And I have had zero issues with predators. I know that's an issue that some people have brought up. We do have, I live up in the trucky area of Placer County, and we have bears, coyotes, raccoons, assorted other animals, and they go for garbage. That's where our big issue is. They walk right past the chickens and go right on to the neighbor's garbage can. People that leave their dog food out, that's another big concern. I've actually got some of my neighbors to put their dog food inside, which has eliminated some of our raccoon problems that we've had around there. And you look at also, you know, how do you take care of a six-pound chicken? Well, if I have a six-pound pug dog, how do I provide for either one of those? They're both something that a predator is going to go after. So as an individual, I need to make sure that I'm doing the right thing. And to regulate one animal over another in a different manner is not correct. So I'm just going to pass on, and I think that you should just take what you have and put hen next to parrot. It's a real simple thing to do, everything else is in place.
I will make one comment.
Sure.
Because I do, I do have a parrot in my office that I've had.
Uh-huh.
It's been with us for 25 years. There is a lot of difference between a parrot and a chicken. A parrot is very content to stay in a very small space on their roost and, you know, not fly around. But chickens do need a little bit of space to get out and scratch.
Yeah, chickens do like to scratch, but parrots like to fly, and it's not untypical to clip the wings on parrots to keep them from doing that. So, you know, they both have, yours has definitely gotten used to where it's at. And chickens do too. They're, because I live in snow country, for three months of the year, they stay inside their chicken coop. They have no desire. I open their door for them every day, they look outside the snow, and they're like, yeah, not going outside today. So they weren't very happy with this last snowstorm that came through. So they are fairly content if they need to be. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask me. I've had them for a couple of years. I have a lot of information, a lot of background on them.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? One digger.
Hi, Lee Bastian. I'm also the-
Hi, Lee Bastian. I'm also the poultry coordinator for Placer County 4-H. And I teach the kids that when they start their, you know, projects, to go to their neighbors and tell them that you're going to do this project and see if they have any concerns. And if they have issues, tell them to come to you before they go to the authorities because you can, see if you can resolve them. Because, you know, you need to teach the kids how to properly raise the animals. And I've raised poultry for now 17 years, 20 years. I have, my chickens are not cooped up. I have a barn that's 20 by 40 that they roost in. I have five acres and they allow free range. Most, most of the time they stay within, stay within 20 feet of the barn. They don't go on my neighbor's property. But I know we have other people in the community of Sheridan that live downtown in the community that have chickens. And this would make it legal for them to have them. Right now, they're illegal because they're not zoned. And I do, and you'll see them roam in the streets. And the biggest problem I have with raising chickens is the neighbor's dogs because they like to come over and eat my chickens.
What, what's your thoughts about the proposed ordinance itself, given that you have this experience with the poultry?
I, I like, I like it. I think it's good because I also, because, you know, I think it's good that we, you know, include it for the residential people because a lot of people are going back to it. In fact, one of the, there's a new magazine out called Backyard Poultry. It comes out every, every two months. It's about people that raise chickens. And it's fascinating and their leadership is growing by leaps and bounds by people who want to get in, raising their chickens.
But not the issue of three versus six?
With three, you don't get enough eggs, you know, for a family of four. You'd need about six to get enough eggs to feed a family of four.
I, I understand where you have property because I can, that's what I had with my chickens, you know, run out free and all, all of that. I think the bigger, bigger issue at least for me is we're talking about a residential area, smaller lots and how do we allow the people to have the six chickens and not affect their neighbors?
Well.
And so I guess in my mind, I'm sort of looking for that, okay, how much space do we need to have to contain six chickens? You know, what, what size of, of yard? I mean, I've heard different things. In my mind, I have my own ideas for it. But I'm, I'm looking for advice from you as a poultry person. Is it five square feet of, of open space plus a hen house? So that way they get out, wander around and?
You can have what's called a chicken coop or chicken run, which is fenced in, which would keep them in, which gives them out, allows them to wander and still do, because they, they do dusting, which is one of their things to protect them from bugs and mites. They dust themselves and they like to get in and fling up the dirt. I know with the city of Roseville that their ordinance requires their chicken coops to be, have a setback of 10 feet from the property line. Because I, the question came up as a 4-H advisor a couple of years ago. So I checked into what Roseville had a couple of years ago before this ordinance. And I, I kind of like, this ordinance is good. I think it needs, I would like to see it go forward. But I think it needs, you know, some clarifications and updates.
But the question still stands. How about, from you, how much room do you think six chickens need?
They, at least, they recommend three feet per hen or chicken.
Three square feet?
Yeah, minimum.
And that's, that's in the open outside of the hen house?
Right.
Your, your thoughts on, on all this issue of different lot sizes and stuff? I mean, do you think it's better to have an open footprint that, say, is a certain size for six chickens versus saying it's a 2,000 square foot lot, you have X number of chickens, 4,000, you know, so many more, and 6,000 where it's uniform enough to where it sort of can accommodate the smallest?
Yeah, the open size, you know, would be, instead of, instead of a, open size instead of a lot size because you could have a big lot with only 10 feet, you know, left for chickens and, and you could still have a small lot with a lot of open space.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Anybody else want to make a comment? Okay.
The minimum size of chicken, remember, commercial chickens are raised in little pens that are about 18 inches square. So anything that's above that is going to be good for the chicken. And that's why you get healthier eggs and healthier chickens is because they give a little more space. If you give one chicken 10 acres, it's going to love it. But they do live commercially in 18 by 18 inch pens. So that kind of gives you what's required.
Well, and I, I, I understand. I think that, that the question is what kind of open space so they can get out, flap their wings, dust themselves, they have a run. And you pretty much said with your size of, of run for your chickens, actually?
It's more than adequate.
Yeah, it's more than adequate.
And if there's anything we want, it's happy chickens.
Yeah.
Yeah. I look, my chickens are happy. I just wanted to remind you too that the majority, not majority, probably 30 or 50% of residential areas in Placer County have HOAs that have CCNRs that do restrict those things. I am a property manager. I know that. I, I do enforcement on those things. People do have option to move away from those things and?
This doesn't affect CCNRs?
I know, it does not. But people who don't want to have certain kinds of animals can move to a restricted community. You should allow the people who don't live in those to be able to provide for themselves. You know, and if you look at Thomas Jefferson, what would he say if we said, oh, you can't raise chickens? I mean, he'd be rolling over in his grave thinking that we've come to a country that has laws like this.
Okay. This is a workshop? I'm, okay, it is back to us, but I am going to keep the public portion open just in case. And Rich, you have some words of wisdom?
Well, maybe some words of wisdom here. Let me see, the chicken hen per lot area proposal. To me, I would suggest that we not do that because it kind of leads to a lot of higher mathematics. And a lot of people really probably don't know clearly how big their lot is. And so it adds some difficulty and maybe in terms of enforcement would add some complexity to the process. Then the other comment I have is in relationship to the residential zoning, RS zoning. And I guess it was a problem that occurs up in Forest Hill in the Todd Valley area where you have some that's combined and some is residential. I'm wondering in the residential area, say, if they have less than five, a half an acre, that they can have three chickens. But if they have more than a half an acre in the residential area, they could have six chickens. So it, it's more restrictive than in the combined zoning, but it does provide flexibility, particularly in areas where the lots are typically an acre in size for people to go up to six chickens. So that would be my, my thoughts on it.
I guess, I guess mine is similar to that, but instead of going lot sizes, I think the county could come up with a footprint. And you're not telling the person how to build a chicken pen or whatever. As long as they can contain the chickens, that that, that way you could base it on. Because I keep hearing six chickens. And I tend to agree if you're raising them for eggs, you know, you're going to have more productivity that way. But if the county went out and said, okay, need something as big as that screen is the open space for a chicken, you know, 10 by 15, 10 by 20. And then, and a, you know, a hen house next to it, which can be really small. That that way you can take that model and if the guy is on a 2,000 square foot lot and it's five foot setbacks, 10 foot setbacks, and he can put that there, he meets the standards. And then that way you don't, you, you cut out a whole bunch of, okay, what is my lot size? You know, what if your lot was one square foot under what the next up size is? And you're thinking, well, I could put the six chickens here, but I can only have three. And I'm, I'm just saying.
I guess Ken, I guess, I have a question, I have a question for you though. Are you thinking across all, all zoning? Because, you know, I think?
I, I don't have a problem with agricultural, you know, doing, doing a higher, or once you get past the, the half acre.
But if you're in a residential, I mean?
But if you're in a residential, I guess my concern, because you know where?
You're talking about residential then, right?
Yeah, where your problems are, it's not in a rural area where there are half acre lots or one acre. Your problem is in a residential neighborhood where the houses are, are fairly close together and the backyards where you've got three neighbors' backyards that just back right up against your fence. So it's how you contain it there. And so if you have something that's sort of a, in my mind, that would be a, a footprint for six chickens, then that way it, it, it's real easy. If somebody has a gripe about it, code enforcement goes out there, they measure, everything's fine, it's fine. But all of a sudden, if you get a neighbor that says, well, look, he's on a quarter acre lot and it's a third acre and he has more, then all of a sudden you get into all this extra enforcement, all this other stuff. My deal is make it simple.
And you're also not considering administrative permits then? You wouldn't have somebody go out and check and see if they got the right square footage to be ginning?
I, I wouldn't worry because then, you know what, if somebody made it five square feet bigger and none of the neighbors complained? I mean, what, what drives, what drives our, our whole issue is?
Complaints.
It's complaints. You know, a person can do everything just perfect and have all the permits in the world. And if the neighbor doesn't like, like, you know, the other neighbor or whatever, there's, can be complaints. I mean, we've?
Not just bring that up because it was?
I'm, I'm just thinking, try to make it simple on everybody in the community and on staff.
The staff has recommended that we have a minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet. The Agricultural Commission has suggested that elimination of the administrative review process would be appropriate. And they've also requested that the number of chickens increase from three to six. Your comments on those proposals?
Well, three to six on the 5,000 square foot lot?
Minimum.
Minimum. I, I, I've seen where there's smaller lots because if it's a small house and you have a reasonable backyard, that's why if you can meet setbacks, if it's a five or 10 foot setback all the way around, doesn't matter what size the lot is. If the house, your perimeter fence, your property lines, and you can contain your chickens in there and meet that minimum square footage for those six chickens, that takes care of the issue.
But is, we, we got to come up with some sort of a number, at least recommend to staff.
Well, that's, you know, 5,000. I was sort of looking more for the professionals out there.
I know.
I, I, I have my, you know, I have my?
I think the, the ag commission went with 5,000 square feet, didn't they?
No, no, that's for the lot size. I'm saying?
I mean, that was what the ag commission came up with as 5,000.
Contain the chickens, to contain the chickens because you don't need, yeah, that much space.
Yeah, the Agriculture Commission did come up with 5,000 square feet. And the fact of the matter is that in matters that are primarily agricultural in nature, I tend to give their requests a lot weight.
Yeah, I would support that too myself. A 5,000 square foot minimum lot size is what you're saying?
Yeah. Here's what they want.
Well, the thing is, agriculture is looking at it as a way of raising, I mean, primarily agriculture has to do with commercial agriculture. This isn't. This is for feeding families. So it doesn't matter if you have a 50,000 square foot lot or a 5,000 square foot lot. You're basically trying to have enough eggs for four people. Doesn't matter about the size. You don't need, you know, a bigger lot with more chickens. You don't, you shouldn't have more chickens because then you can go and get a chicken farm. You just can have the four, six chickens for that family. So I, I didn't agree with Ken that I think it's more important to have a minimum square size for the chickens than a lot size.
Do you have a number in mind or haven't you processed it that far yet?
Well, if it's three square feet per chicken and there's six chickens, 18, make it 20 square feet.
Wow.
That's pretty small. Well, I'm, I'm? I think we just voted that maybe 18 inches was too small for commercial growers. So maybe that 18 inch thing is, is out the window so you can make it even larger.
I'm, I'm thinking more honestly where if, if you took, took the screen, say you took a 10 by 15, you know, it can be 10 by, by 20. If it fits in the yard for, for the open part, open space for the chicken, that's, that's enough space.
So if I understand what you're saying, you're, you're saying that you want to specify the, the open area? For lack of a better word?
Yeah, it's, it's no different than if you want a pool in your backyard, you meet certain setbacks. Whatever space is left over can be the pool.
Okay, well, that might be a way to, Muriel, did you want to? Hold on a second, Joe.
I'm, I'm, I'm a bit confused because I think this is getting very complicated.
It is?
We don't have any open space requirements for, for dogs in a town home. And I've seen people have a dog in a town home no bigger than, their backyard's no, no bigger than twice her desk.
Well, my dog doesn't graze. That's the problem.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, chickens just peck around in the yard.
Eating insects.
Setting maybe a limit, like three or six chickens per residential area and then possibly limiting for townhomes and apartments would make, would make, keep it simple because you have a limit of four dogs. Someone can have four dogs in a little bitty square.
Well.
And it, so why can't you just say a limit of chickens or, without this requiring open space or lot size or? The ag commissioner, I guess I would take her consideration into effect of the 5,000 square foot lot size, which would eliminate possibly any townhomes and stuff. That would do it without being discriminatory in that respect. But worrying about open space for chickens when we don't worry about them for cats and dogs and, and all this other stuff? It doesn't make sense to me. These chickens are just roaming around. And the other, the other comment I have to make is that the chickens don't lay every single day and they don't lay all the time. So if you have six chickens, you have more flexibility of providing enough eggs for a family of four.
Okay, and one of the, I would agree with you if everybody in residential development felt the same way where they just peck around and stuff. I'm, I'm trying to come up with something that, that makes people that really would rather not have chickens next to them, even though they're in the right zoning, but where everything's contained, where it all works and?
That you don't have a niche on a chicken.
Yeah. A, a dog you can put in your yard, some chickens, some kinds of chickens can fly, some can't. If they get out, you know, they're not quite as smart as dogs.
But I think most people, like the planning department said, I think we have to trust some respect to the responsibility of the owners and they're going to want the chickens to stay in their yard. They're wanting, they're going to want the eggs. They're not going to get eggs if they're flying around and getting killed. But I, I don't want dogs right next to me either, but you don't limit the number of dogs or, except to four.
You can't have all the dogs.
I think it's just getting complicated, that's all.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, I'm trying to, my idea would meet what the ag commissioner's doing, also give more flexibility because if you like chickens, what's to say if your lot is 4,500 square foot and your neighbor's 5,000? You can't have chickens, but your neighbor has chickens.
That's why I, I question whether even having a limit on the lot. Why not just say a limit of X number of chickens for a, a person in a residential area unless they're an apartment or a townhome? That's all I'm thinking.
But you still have to have the payment.
I, I just, I have a hate to see it get so complicated. I I just, I I hate to see it get so complicated.
Yeah.
That people won't understand.
We're trying to balance the interests of of everybody. And also, we're trying to protect Mr. Ward and people who do want to raise the chickens so that they can stand as a matter of right on this ordinance. And it's a tough.
Yeah, you know, I, Ken, I I hear what you're saying, but, you know, I think a number of chicken is much more simple to deal with than square foot of where you're gonna have the chickens run. And I guess I still think that in residential areas, we should be able to relax the number of chickens, or more chickens on the larger lots. But on the smaller lots, under five thousand square feet or whatever, then limit it to three chickens. But that, to me, that's a simple way to go about it and would be simple to enforce. I guess I still kind of come in at that area. Very similar to the ag commission, but maybe loosen it up for.
Yeah.
Larger lots in the residential area.
And my my counter, my only counter to that is that as a person that's raised all sorts of animals and been involved in a lot of animal husbandry, I would rather see, you know, some kind of a s- amount of open space, because I'll go back, you can have a five thousand square foot lot with absolutely no ground. I mean, it can be, whether it's concrete or 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 whatever.
Well, what would what would be the the number that you would propose for space? I guess that's probably what we need if we're gonna go that way or suggest that.
Before you get to a specific number, don't forget the county's gonna have to enforce this, Ken. And what I don't want is the folks at the desk out here having to go out and measure the open space. They can, they'll know from maps what the square footage is on the lot, from plat maps, right? And if one of your scenarios comes to pass that of the five thousand square foot lot, four thousand nine hundred and ninety-five of it contain a house, then wouldn't we be able to rely on the article that's on the screen now about animal control regulations?
Well, they couldn't meet the setbacks if the lot was covered, because.
Suppose there's no, they're, they can wander around, I mean, they don't have to have a chicken coop. Couldn't we rely on that instead?
Well, we could do it, do it that way. All I'm saying is what I'm proposing is, to me, would seem simpler, but also open it up to a a lot more people that might want to have chickens. And also from from a over the counter point, if a person, there's, there is a containment issue, you know, that I see. Hey, if a person has three acres and his chickens are out wandering around or an acre, it's a lot of difference than a five thousand square foot lot, that if you have six chickens and all of a sudden they're they're hopping over the fence and and say, one neighbor doesn't have chickens, five neighbors have chickens, and all of a sudden the chickens decide to go into the one neighbor's yard and scratch up all his plants and stuff. If you contain them, then you don't have that problem. You you take a lot of code enforcement, you know, animal control, you you just take all that away. I'm I'm saying probably, probably maybe, I should just say it, that they need to be contained in some kind of a chicken run, where there's open space, where it's it's.
Their abilities or range is limited.
It it's limited.
Ken, you know, a five thousand square foot lot is what, about a little over a tenth of an acre? And, you know, if somebody's got less than the five thousand square foot lot, they're probably not gonna have any ability to really to have reasonable space for chickens anyway. You know, it's just a postage stamp lot. And so it seems like having that in there and the ag commission supported it, you know, the five thousand seems to make some sense. But then the question beyond that is, you know, can I have three chickens or six chickens or how many? And so the argument, I guess we're having beyond the five thousand square feet is, you're saying open space, have an open space requirement, and I guess what has been proposed is a numbers of chickens requirement.
Charlene has all the answers and she's been waiting her hand while.
Well, I I know we're getting to the practical side of implementing the this zoning text amendment, and we're fortunate enough to have Kathy Wisted here, who's had over ten years of code enforcement and experience, and before that, working with animal control. So she can tell you more of the practical side and and what works and what probably doesn't work with county regulations with respect to animal raising and keeping.
Hi, Kathy Wisted, Placer County Code Enforcement. A couple of things, there's a penal code that actually mandates adequate exercise area for animals, so that's in place. There's at-large laws that are in effect with the Placer County Animal Services, so that's already in place with regard to the mandatory containment of the chickens. There's already a county provision that that exists that's in place. If the chickens are at large, they're running on your neighbor's property, whatever, there's a mechanism to address that. The enforceability of a pen size, if if I come onto your property, sir, and you say, I'm not, I'm not going to let you measure my pen, do you think a judge is gonna sign an inspection warrant for me to come and measure your chicken pen? So that really becomes an enforceability issue that I truly see no way around with, unless we have an extraordinary amount of voluntary compliance, which doesn't seem to be the case with regard to chickens.
Okay. You have a problem with that, though, on, say, large lots, where a person has a small pen because they don't want chickens running around? I mean, it, I guess I sort of see the the comment where, you know, measuring the pen, where it can be, you know, very, very small, maybe not meet all the standards, but be on a ten acre lot, because the guy has everything landscaped and puts the chickens down in a corner. So I guess from an argument standpoint, just.
I I mean, in in the ideal world, but as as I'm sure you guys know, we don't live in the ideal world. And the practicality of enforcement is is something that does need to be considered when we're rewriting an ordinance. Is it something that's actually, is something that we can truly approach? Is it something that's gonna truly serve the community, not only the people who want chickens, but the people that don't want the chickens?
Jeff, you have something?
Is there, is there a way that, I guess I'm coming back to a lot of discussion that that, you know, maybe six chickens is a good number, this was with the ag commission. But at any rate, if, you know, I don't know if it would be, you know, if if somebody's in a residential district and they have over, say, a half an acre or over a quarter of an acre, would it make sense in that case to go ahead and let them have six chickens on that? It seems to me.
Sure.
It would. And 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 as it's stated now, it's, they're limited to three. If they have an acre in a residential, they're limited to three. And so I guess what I'm proposing is that we come forward and say that if, you know, they have a little larger lot in a residential area, that it's okay to have more chickens.
Yeah, we're agreed on the more chickens. What we're not agreed on is how do we measure the slot size, Jeff?
Well, not on the lot size issue, but just on the whole thing. I mean, I think it's getting way too complicated and way too deep. Right now, if somebody has the allotted number of dogs for their size property or or pigs or whatever, the other animals that are allowed without type, any approval. If there is an issue with a neighbor and how those animals are being kept or where they're being kept, does the county have a a way to approach that neighbor about that? If, or can they say, well, no, the rules say I get three and I can do what I want?
It depends on the issue of complaint as far as which agency would have jurisdiction, but there's absolutely presently effective ordinances in place, not only county ordinances, but state laws, depending on the severity of the circumstances.
Okay, and so, I guess, how many chicken complaints have we had so far?
One.
Heard about one?
Recently, one.
And I say we table this until it becomes a real issue. This is a whole lot of brain damage going on for something.
Just tell them they can have three to six.
You know, I would, I would agree with you, Jeff, except that it's become an issue. And what, in some degree, we're trying to do is to protect the folks who want to have chickens so that they can have them as a matter of right.
I think the interpretation of this is going to create more issues than just leaving it complaint driven. I think that this is getting so, and it's gonna get to be where it's a right. Well, I've done everything you've laid out in fifteen pages of chicken raising ordinance, and I get to keep my chickens and you can't complain. I mean, I, it's just getting way too deep, way too.
Where the problem comes up, though, Jeff, is is if you have chickens and you don't have it covered in the ordinance, then your neighbor takes you to court and then you're out of it for two or three years. And so if you have the ability through the ordinance to have chickens on your property, then it reduces your liability in terms of.
As a matter of right.
Well, then I would think at a minimum, without any kind of conditions or any kind of restrictions, a guy should be able to have as many chickens as he does dogs, cats, pigs, goats, or whatever else is on that allowed list.
Oh, you have something to add in the middle of all of this? You were raising your hand.
I I I think Richard answered the question, is that if we didn't have the ordinance, you wouldn't be allowed to have chickens on the property. So that's what we're trying, we're trying to make allowance to.
What would happen if we adopted one of the suggestions and just put chickens in there along with parrots?
Well, then there could be a potential for a lot of, lot of chickens on one piece of property.
Question, though, you said there's already for containment, for amount of space, that that's all, basically, there are ordinances already that.
That's correct. There's penal code ordinances with regarding to the health and welfare of animals. There's animal services for health and welfare and as well as containment. And and I was confused when when Ms. Freeborn was speaking with regard to what she was quoting, so it took a few minutes to look at that. She was actually quoting the definition of the the household pet. If you look at how you have to maintain a household pet, I've only, you know, I've been working with animals and and code enforcement for over twenty years. I've only met one person that had them as truly as a household pet where they lived with them in their home. And how we enforce the residential accessories, if it's a, an animal that she was quoting the accessory building requirement, that's true, but it has to stay in that building. We're not talking about an exercise yard, we're talking about a building only. Is that truly in the best interest of the happy chicken? Probably not.
You know, Ken, when.
I just want a happy chicken.
When we went through this with horses, you remember the.
We need to license chickens.
The horse, we specified horses in terms of acreage. You know, less than half, a half an acre or more, even titled to two horses, and one acre it's three, or something like that. Shouldn't this be somewhat similar? We did, but we didn't specify how many of those acres were usable for standing a horse.
But that's sort of where I'm going, if you have a open area that meets setbacks, whether if your lot was as big as this, this room and you met the setbacks and you put your chicken pen there and it's meets all the state, federal, humane society for chicken run.
Normally, I would agree with you on these things, but I think we're a little bit apart.
Well, I I I understand it gets, you know, to the small lot.
My my concern comes from this. Number one, I want as little government interference in this process as possible. Number two, I want some specified lot size, and I don't want to get into how much of it is open and whatnot, but I want to be able to go up here to the counter and check on my next door neighbor's lot and see if he's got the minimum square footage. In this case, it's recommended this five thousand. If you have that, then you get to have six chickens as a matter of right. Now, if the neighbor objects because of some other ancillary reason, i.e., we're looking at maltreatment, it doesn't have a chicken coop, or whatever violates some other.
What if.
That's, that's complaint driven. I'm just looking at what kind of rights should the minimal sized lot owner have to raise chickens, and those would be the requirements I'd impose.
And could you give further that we set a certain number, for example, six chickens, and that's it? I don't care if you got a five thousand square foot lot or fifty thousand square foot, you get ch- six chickens, you don't have to increase it because of.
Well, it varies by zone, varies by zoning.
No, 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 I'm just talking about if we set the limit at five thousand square feet for six chickens, we don't have to keep saying, well, now you got a ten thousand square.
Are you talking, are you, are you talking in the residential zone or in the combined zoning or the ag?
What if I got a ten acre residential lot and I want seven chickens?
Well, you don't, if you want to have a.
You gotta come in for a permit, just like if you want five dogs.
You gotta go, this isn't for raising chickens, this is for.
That might be, that may, yeah, that's true, that might be.
And then what, what happens, so we, we pass it for the five thousand, we just say, fine, let's just go with what's been advised. But somebody comes up and he's got the, he's next door and he's got the forty-five hundred square foot lot and says, hey, I want a variance, because I can, I can prove I've got more backyard than my neighbor, because he's got the forty-five hundred square foot home and I've got the fourteen hundred square foot home. And so apples to apples, I've got more space in my backyard and I can't have one chicken.
Well, then I guess we would take that on a case by case basis, like we do all.
He could apply for a variance for that, then. I mean, if we set the limit and that's a variance.
And one more thing I don't want is I don't want an administrative review.
I don't either, that's why, that's why I just sort of threw out the ad space.
Mr. Ward, do you have some words of wisdom to add to this debate?
I can go back to this, and a lot of these things for square footages are already in place in what you have for the aviaries. So there's the five thousand, ten thousand, twenty thousand, one acre or more than one acre sizes are already defined, so you guys don't need to redo it if you don't want to. And remember, too, if you just wrote hen, chicken hen next to parrot here, even though you're allowed to have quite a few according to this, well, people that are allowed to have four dogs don't necessarily own four dogs. Most people have one, maybe two dogs. The same with canaries, like I can have twelve hundred canaries and finch type birds if I have one acre. People don't necessarily do that, just because you're allowing them to. So we get back to, on the indoor aviatories, it says, there is no limit on the specific number of birds we kept in an interior, interior, indoor aviary, subject to the nuisance animal provision, provision. So there's already things set in place so that although I'm allowed to have this, number one, I'm not gonna have a hundred chickens, because that's a lot of work. I'm gonna have enough to satisfy what I need to do. And number two, there's provisions that if I have too many, there's people that can complain and we can restrict that because of the way they, the way they're kept, where they're kept, how they're kept.
And we have to assume, of course, everybody's gonna max it out.
Right.
I, that's what you're doing.
Ideally.
You know, you already have these things where, I mean, you imagine, if I have one acre, I could have eighteen hundred birds on it, that's.
Okay, well, let's, let's.
If I'm, if I'm.
Example.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ward.
I think the aviary might be a good section, but the zoning ordinance specifically states that fowl and poultry is separate from the aviary section. But the aviary section does have something that might be useful. Another idea, idea to consider is they do break it up between how many you can have on a five thousand square foot, ten thousand, twenty thousand square foot. Might make it a little bit simpler than a.
I I I totally disagree. I I believe that should have nothing to do with it. You get, you determine the number of chickens per whatever family or residence for zoning, and you don't get more because you have more space, because that's not the intent of raising the chickens to start. If you want to start a farm, go start an agricultural farm. This is just to feed the family, basically. So you don't, you don't need more.
Let's see if we can come up with some sort of a, I was gonna use the word consensus, but at least some sort of an idea of direction for Charlene, because.
Some sort of direction that we can take.
Would it be fair to say that one issue we all agree on is there's no administrative review process?
Yes.
Yes, 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 yes.
How about the six chickens?
Okay, all right, at least we agree on that.
On a point of clarification for that, how do you feel about the residential multifamily district?
Well, that may fall out, depending upon what we do with the square foot size issue.
All right.
Okay, and then jumping over the square foot size issue, coming to the number of chickens in a residential family, the Agricultural Commission recommended six. In our packet, there's three. Is there's any consistency on numbers?
I'll go with the agricultural.
I, I, six is a good number.
Yeah, because I have chickens and.
You're strangely quiet, right? Six?
Well, I, I'm, you know, I'm trying to think through the rationale of three, but, you know, I I think on particularly larger residential areas, six would be a good number.
Okay, yeah, I agree with the six, too, so we.
What's the, what's the three? Where'd we come up with the three?
Well, that was her number, she decided this, how many it takes to raise enough eggs to eat for a family of four. Wasn't that what you said?
It's what, the number that we were given to work with.
Okay.
So now it's six.
Now, now it's six, that's inflation for you.
Okay. And what might be the minimum lot size requirement?
That's what I want.
Okay, well, the multifamily will fall out. If we make a minimum lot size of five thousand square feet, none of them have that.
Okay, well, I mean, if that's the way it's brought, that's what I want to take.
Yeah, so we don't even need to address it. Muriel brought that up, and is that not true, Charlene, that multifamily won't be able to meet the five thousand square foot?
Right.
Lot minimum?
Though, if you have a piece of property that is zoned multifamily but is being currently used as a single family residence, then they wouldn't be allowed to have chickens.
Oh, yeah, they would.
Right, you need to have, if you have the minimum lot size requirement, someone that has a single family home and a multifamily zoned district would have to meet the minimum lot size.
But if we took the multifamily zoning out of it.
No, no, he's.
Oh, no, you would.
We, we would leave it in, they just wouldn't be able to do it.
You just have the five thousand square feet.
Except in your scenario.
So they would have chickens in your scenario.
So what we come down to is this, Ken's proposal is let's measure the space available for, for ranging and the staff's proposal is let's just look at lot size. Is there?
Well, I guess if the consist, consensus is that everybody's saying 5,000 square foot lot, then my points move. Mine was, was to be able to get it down to a smaller lot size because that's actually where everything's going.
5,000 is small.
And, and there's still the provision for somebody with a 4,500 square foot lot to come in and apply for a variance if he can show and convince neighbors who are all being informed about it that he's going to be able to have chickens, right? So it doesn't exactly eliminate it, it just make, starts. I mean, he has a recourse, so he doesn't sue us.
Does lot size seem reasonable to you, Nikki? Jeff?
I don't have a problem with that. Like I said, I'd like to just keep county involvement out of it as much as possible.
I think we're all agreed on that.
And leave the rest complaint driven at this point. If we get a second complaint, then we'll wait for number three and then take it up, I don't know.
So Charlene, I think that there was in fact a consensus here that 5,000 would be the minimum lot size for RS and RM. And the other combined zoning, what else do we have for us? Yeah, leave those as, as proposed, you know, the larger the more, I guess.
And the question was, what would setbacks, remember there were setbacks?
Setbacks vary according to the zone district. I don't know at the cough, at the top of my head, know what it is for resort is probably like 25 feet or 30 feet on the sides and 50 feet in the rear. But it will vary according to the specific zone district.
By setbacks, you're referring to accessory structures, aren't you? Barns and coops and things like that? I mean, my chickens can range right up to my property line.
All right, there is, there is setback requirements for the enclosure.
For the animal.
Or if you had, so if you have an enclosure of a certain size, it has to be located closer to your residence than the, any adjoining residence on, on adjoining property.
But at this point, there is no enclosure required, correct?
There's no, there is, ordinances says that there shall be a confined to the subject property. So there is no enclosure requirement, requirement, just that they're confined to the subject property.
And confined is?
In a pen, in, in a fenced, fenced in area, so they don't wander off the property.
It's the way it's written and applied to all other animals within the county, it's consistent.
Okay, that's how far that then? One last thing that I'm aware of, and maybe somebody else bring up, and that has to do with the humane issues that were brought up. My reaction is let's rely on the zoning as it's currently written. We don't get involved in treatment of animals, we'll leave that up to the professionals. Any comments on that? Yeah, okay, everybody agrees on that. So what did we fail to address then, Charlene?
Well, I guess we, by default, threw out the idea of the chicken hen per lot area concept.
For the other zoned districts?
No, just in total.
I'm not following your question.
Well, the, the chicken hen per lot area proposal is based on so many square feet.
Oh, and increasing incremental number of chickens.
Yeah, as, as this proposal in the, and let me try and see if I can say it right this time. If you're in, in the combined zoning, you can have, what, six chickens if you have less than a half an acre?
What's currently recommended?
12 chickens if you have less than an acre and then above that, you go up to a maximum of 24?
As already permitted by ordinance, 24 chickens per acre.
And so that is different than the chicken hen per lot area proposal, right?
Correct.
And so we're taking that, well, I guess we need to have discussion.
Well, weren't those different districts? I thought those were AG and RS zones.
Right, and we're talking about multiple residential.
Yeah, and we're looking at RS and RM for the chicken hen.
Oh, okay, so the 5,000 was minimum, but what happens when we get to an RS of an acre or RS of five?
When you have a combined zone.
Well, this was just a, this was a different proposal than what we have on the table. At least I recommended that we not do it because of the complexity associated with the calculation. It's simpler, see, I can repeat it the way it's stated, but I would have trouble repeating it the way it's proposed.
Well, there are apparently lots in the RS zone that go up to 2.3 acres and as Mickey had suggested it, six chickens. They're for personal use, six chickens.
We're not trying to get chicken farmers here, we're trying to get people to.
Yeah, and I think that's a reasonable start to all of this, just leave RS at six chickens.
Yeah, the, the only other item provide direction I maybe already have was says, if you have greater than 40,000 square feet, there was that recommendation or comment to go.
Forget it.
So, so we're not, the direction is not to look above an acre.
We're not looking at anything over five, I mean, anything under 5,000 square feet, otherwise it all stays the same.
You want to state that again?
I just want to make sure for the larger lots, like an acre or greater, you're just looking at six chicken hens and not addressing the standards.
5,000 is the, is the magic.
In RS only. See that direction and we can run with it.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I guess.
That would take care of your issue. Muriel, you think that would satisfy yours too? Okay, gentlemen, any more comments on this or any other issue?
Who's, who's making the motion?
There is no motion needed, this was a. Isn't that nice?
Yeah, and just to let people know, the next step is to go back and redraft the zoning text amendment. We would need to complete our environmental review and the environmental review committee would need to relook at the, the change in the zoning text amendment. We need to complete the environmental document and then we'd be able to come back to you for the planning commission hearing.
Then you get to email it to all the acts, don't forget that.
We, we've already been to all the acts.
Okay, if there's nothing else for the commission, we are adjourned.